The Santa Cruz City Council. If you would like to comment on a closed session item, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. In this part of the meeting, the council will receive public testimony. Thereafter, the public line will be closed and inaccessible. Please mute your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through the phone. Please note, there is a delay in streaming, so if you continue to listen on your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to speak. All council members are participating in this meeting remotely. I want to thank the public for staying home to view today's city council meeting. I would like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor, Vice Mayor is logging in now. Councilmember Watkins? Not here. Calentari Johnson?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Golda? Is currently absent. Vice Mayor Brunner?
Present.
And Mayor Myers?
Present.
Great, thank you. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to any items listed on the closed session agenda? Let me just look to see if we have any folks in the audience. I'm not seeing any attendees, and I have not received any notice that anyone was planning to speak today or requested to. I'm not seeing any, then we will go ahead. And this meeting is now adjourned, and council will go into its closed session. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. If council members could turn on their cameras if they're available, that would be great. You know, some people are still coming in. Good afternoon. Welcome to our 1:00 PM session of the August 24th, 2021 meeting of the Santa Cruz City Council. I have a few announcements, and then we will move on to our meeting. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on community television, Channel 25, and streaming on the city's website, cityofsancacruz.com. All council members are participating in this meeting remotely. I want to thank the public for staying home today to view today's city council meeting. If you wish to comment on an agenda item today, please call in at the beginning of the item you are wanting to comment on using the instructions on your screen. Please mute your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through the phone. Please note, there is a delay in streaming, so if you continue to listen or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to speak. When it is time for public comment, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your time to speak during public comment, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set to two minutes. You may hang up once you have commented on your item of interest. And I would like to ask you to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Watkins?
Present.
Calentari Johnson?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Golda?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Good afternoon, present.
And Mayor Myers.
I am present. Thank you. A little bit. Okay, we'll start off this afternoon with a few presentations, and then we will, we have three presentations, and then we have two mayor proclamations. So I'll go ahead and invite up Jeff, the executive director of the 418 Project, and she is here to discuss their new facility downtown. Laura, you should be able to come on in and... Bonnie, has she checked in with you?
Um, yeah, let me...
Don't see her in the audience.
She is.
Is she here?
She is. I promoted her to...
Sure, she is. Sure I am. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear you great, yes.
Hi, thank you so much. It's nice to see your faces. And I know there are a lot of people too that I can't see, so let me just say, Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and everyone who serves the city of Santa Cruz, hi. I'm Laura Bishop. I have the unique privilege to be the executive director of the 418 Project, and I want to share some updates. And I, in case you're wondering, no, this is not a green screen. This is the projection room in our new home, which is the Old Riverfront Theater, and it's the audio booth. It's my favorite room here. And so what's important about that is that the 418 Project, which has been serving Santa Cruz for 28 years, we just invested $2 million in downtown. And so we just were able to purchase, and this is actually owned by the nonprofit, so this is actually community-owned, portable, accessible, 22,000-square-foot facility that is located one block from the mall, between the Tannery and the Warriors, right at the Dragon's Gate. And so I'm just excited to share some things about this that I want you guys to know about. Yeah, even though I'm not even in the room, I'm nervous, and it's just nice to be seeing you. Sonia, you were at our diversity event last Saturday, and that was super cool. Mayor Myers met with Congressman Jimmy Panetta last week to talk about green infrastructure support. And so what I want you guys to know is that we are so excited to be part of the reemergence of our fair city, not only from COVID, but also, I want to tell you a little bit about what we're up to, and under the framework of health and all policies, because we really feel excited to be able to be supporting the city of Santa Cruz in equity and public health. So I'm just going to kind of give you guys the high spots on that. But what I want to tell you is, we're here. We're going to be here for generations. We're community-owned, and if you haven't come down and said hi, like, please come down and say hi. Yeah, we're just here. So essentially, the high spots are that this is the Old Riverfront Theater, and we are not tearing it down. You know, we're repurposing this building. And so we're taking it from an outdated, antiquated, you know, passive kind of movie theater into all adaptive community space. And what that means is that we're going to have a variety of spaces that will be really a place for arts businesses to grow, for artists in Santa Cruz. This is whether you're just starting out or whether you're established or not. There'll be affordable places for people to come and grow their businesses with us. Also, that, just to give you guys a little bit of a perspective, prior to the pandemic and our founding location, and you know, you guys might know this because you know us. We've been around for a long, long time. We're bringing 1,000 people a week to downtown and serving about 450 artists a year. And so realistically, in the new facility, we're talking about being able to serve 2,000 artists and impact most likely over 50,000 people. And that means 150,000 visits to downtown. So not only coming to shop and dine and just partake in downtown Santa Cruz, but also now people that are coming for regional events. That's the impact in terms of the user base. But there's something else that we, but there's more. But there's more. So what I would also say about last week's meeting with Congressman Panetta is that we were joined not only by Mayor Myers, but also by Greg Pepping of the Coastal Watership Council. And so what we're doing is, we finally got it. We're committing. So not only are we committing to acquire a substantial open-air roof gathering space on our roof overlooking the river that will serve up to 100 people at a time. Because you know, if we had an open-air gathering space, we could be open right now. And who knows how long we're going to be riding the whole COVID thing? Maybe the rest of our lives, I don't know. So we're committing to providing a really substantial place for people to gather safely. But we were also already talking about photovoltaic, but we've also just committed to going for a living roof. So if you can imagine 10,000 square feet of wildflowers on the roof, along with garden beds for people to learn, for children to learn about gardens, and for a place for people to gather to just overlook the river. Other benefit of that is that this roof will help make us more than carbon neutral. It'll actually make us a carbon-positive contributor, helping reduce pollution and cool the neighborhood off, and helping really even bring the health of the river back. Like, this is something that's... Yeah, we hope, I mean, we hope that this will not only be something that's good for us, but also is a model for Santa Cruz. So let me get a little bit more organized. I have my notes in terms of sustainability, equity, and public health. So essentially, in terms of sustainability, we're hoping that this project will really contribute to the city's climate action plan. We're really intending to have 400 photovoltaic panels. We're really learning about the scope of the project, but we're really, yeah, we're really, really committing to using the latest in tech. So going to be using green construction standards and techniques. So of course, and this is a source of green jobs, as well as arts jobs. So this remodel will be immediately helping the economy. And in terms of equity, I mean, so something else that we really got, I mean, 418 has historically had a really widespread intergenerational community base, but we really get that our purpose and our people and our place and our processes and our power dynamics, they're really, it's not enough just to provide a space anymore. So we're really, our strategic plan already had in place that there was a gap in our service, significantly with our Latinx neighbors, you know, Beach Flats and Live Oak. And so we're really doing more to create more equitable outcomes. So we are really happy to let you know that we were just honored by a grant from the Arts Council for our racial equity work. And we were just also honored by a major grant from the California Arts Council, as well, of general support. It's also in service of not only our community programming, but also our equity work in that. And then finally, public health, really that... So there's so many ways to talk about it. I mean, obviously, we're a movement art center. So our principles are community, art, embodiment, and mindfulness. And so we're a source of well-being, whether people come to do aerial arts or chigga or come to dance church or do an affordable performance. That's what we are, that's our stock and trade. That's what we do. But also, we're adjacent to the river. So in terms of supporting Santa Cruzans to walk to see us or ride their bikes or take public transport, like, that's what we've always done. We've always been on the river. We've always been kind of a scrappy community art space that we really get what it's like. We really get what it takes to be downtown. And so I'm just kind of geekily excited that we're here to stay. So I don't know. I mean, I feel like now's when I would ask you, what do you guys want to know? But I know I only have a few minutes with you, so... Yeah, and typically, Laura, we don't do a back-and-forth during presentation time, but I think maybe the main invitation is, I would assume, for council members who want to come to your facility. I'm assuming you're an open door. So really, really pleased to hear about all the things that you guys are doing, and really glad you could update. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. We're here for you, we're here with you. And please, you know, this is a town where relationships are central, and I just want to invite you to be creative and let me know if you can think of relationships that might be of support to us right now. Of course, city funding, but also, we're going to be launching our capital campaign, so I invite you and request if you could think of any productive relationships, please, please don't hesitate to let me know. I would be really grateful for that. Thank you so much, Laura, and thanks for making the time. Take care, you guys. Welcome to downtown. Well, welcome, welcome back to downtown. You never left, but... No, we didn't. Staying in downtown. No, we didn't, yeah. Thank you, Laura. Next, we have Kalen Foster-Renda, co-executive director of Monarch Services. Welcome, Kalen.
Thank you, dear. Thank you for having me today. My name is Kalen Foster-Renda. I'm the co-executive director of Monarch Services. For those of you, I know most of you, and I know most of you know, but in case someone doesn't, we are a service provider of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, both intervention and prevention services. And we provided those services with Santa Cruz County for the past 44 years. So the reason I am here today is because we have seen a dramatic increase in the number of domestic violence cases, as well as the severity of the violence that we're seeing. Over the past year, we've seen a 250% increase in the number of support and crisis line calls. We've seen a 75% increase in the number of services Monarch is providing. We've seen a 150% increase in the number of... And we sadly have to add another individual to the femicides in this community totaling five today. That is more than the cumulative 11 years I have worked at Monarch. So why? Why is this currently happening? Thank you, Bonnie. I'll go ahead and move on from the slides. No problem at all. So the impact of COVID, we know, has been extremely traumatic for many members of our community. For those that have experienced significant trauma in their lives, such as the collective trauma of racism or poverty, the traumatic impacts of COVID, such as getting ill or the fear of getting ill, losing loved ones, having to be an essential worker, the lack of childcare and/or school resources, loss of jobs and salary... has created cumulative trauma for many of our community members. Historically, when there is cumulative trauma or trauma after trauma, violence increases. Our clients are reporting that financial stressors, the lack of access to resources such as childcare and mental health services, isolation for family and coworkers, and being at home in crowded housing situations with little to no personal space have all dramatically exacerbated the violence within the relationships and homes. So what can we do as a community? In the short term, bystander intervention works. If you see or hear something, intervene. Call on for help, Monarch. If it's safe to do so physically or verbally, intervene in that situation. Listen more and reach out to friends, family, and coworkers. If you notice something is different about somebody that you care for, don't be afraid to ask. Don't be afraid to provide resources. If you're an employer, you can offer resources in disclosed locations such as restrooms so that people can access services. And use your social media platforms to be able to provide information around local resources, such as Monarch Services, Walnut Avenue Women's Center. But what do we do in the long term? It's imperative that we improve the safety net services for people with historical trauma. It has got to be a long-term community investment, investing in such things as safe housing and financial assistance, such as universal basic income, job training, education, et cetera. At Monarch, our housing program, which offers financial assistance and case management to support survivors in securing safe and stable long-term housing, and support services necessary to keep those families housed, such as financial assistance for education, childcare, transportation, physical and mental health services. We have seen, over the past three years of this program, that 96% of the clients that participate in that program do not go back to violent relationships. Fundamental entities work and prevent violence. We also need to increase the availability and access of mental health services. These services are severely lacking, and there has never been a more critical time when these services are needed. In closing, we're dealing with a pandemic within a pandemic, and it is an imperative that our community offers and provides the resources necessary to those... So much at this time. I really thank you for your time and your leadership, and I look forward to more conversation around this of what we can do as a community to end this violence.
Thank you, Kalen. Thank you very much for that presentation. I'm really glad that you were able to come and speak with us. And please, reach out anytime there's program development or needs to utilize the city council presentation period to keep people up to date. I mean, these are very, very serious numbers, and unfortunately, I think we're not going to get out of COVID for a while. So making sure that we, as policymakers, really understand what's happening in our community is very, very helpful. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Take care. You too. Okay, next, we have the beach cleanup presentation, and I'll invite up Tony Elliott, our director of parks, and Rachel Kaufman, our recreation superintendent. Welcome, you guys.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and city council members. And today, it's the moment that you've all been waiting for, the results of the city council member beach cleanup challenge. And so joining me on the Zoom meeting are the recreation and park staff who assisted in the beach cleanup efforts, along with WARP supervisor Britt Hoberg, who had the monumental task of organizing the cleanup of Maine and Cowal beaches all summer long. So at this time, I'm going to share my screen for our presentation. Great. Hopefully, you can see that. So Beach Cleanup Challenge 2021. This is the Olympic edition. To recap, this summer, our Parks and Recreation WARP staff were challenged as people flocked to our beaches in the boardwalk. And after having an awesome time at the beach, badly left large amounts of trash on our beaches. Mayor Myers participated in the beach cleanup with Parks and Recreation Director Tony Elliott on May 24th. And after that event, she encouraged city council members to organize cleanups at the beach this summer. Our creative Parks and Recreation staff jumped on that idea and created the city council member beach cleanup challenge as part of the July of Parks and Recreation Month activities. So the council member who brought out the most volunteers to help clean Maine and Cowal beaches would be awarded the Beach Cleanup Cup. So inspired by the Summer Olympics, the gold medal winner, we're calling it, will win the amazing first-ever Beach Cleanup Cup that was designed by WARP supervisor Britt Hoberg and the WARP team. And so the Beach Cleanup Cup, it's hard to see the amazingness in this photo, but you will soon see it in person. But it's made up of a piece of beach driftwood, the Maine Beach, carefully stained by WARP supervisor Britt Hoberg, with the golden trash can filled with symbolic trash, emphasizing the enormous effort put forth by the winning team. And the plaque reads, "City Council Beach Cleanup Challenge Champion 2021." So as I mentioned, city council members were up for our challenge and scheduled a cleanup date along with a Parks and Recreation staff person for July and into August. And the volunteer beach cleanups really provided enormous help to our WARP crew. We had a total of 153 volunteers come out this summer to help clean Maine and Cowal Beach. And I also want to recognize the Parks and Recreation staff who helped organize the cleanups on the weekends, recreation supervisors Jesse Bond, Robert Acosta, DC Lawson Thomas, and ISF Ray, London Nelson Auditorium Coordinator Jack Sproul, our principal management analyst Lindsay Bass, and park superintendent Travis Beck. We're all assigned to help with your cleanups. And then, of course, I also want to acknowledge the heroic WARP staff who kept the beaches clean all summer long, each and every day, Patrick Mason, Simon Chan, Ryan Kane, and Lupe Silva. And so at this time, I wanted to invite up Britt Hoberg just to say a few words to just about the help that this provided. So Britt, if you're there...
Yeah, I'm here. I just want to say thank you from staff and myself. It was a very challenging year for us. I just want to thank you for all your hard work. And my staff, totally amazed of your support, and it means a lot to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Britt, very much. And now, the moment you've all been waiting for. I'm like such a nerd. I'm so excited about this. And here is the Beach Cleanup Cup. And this, the winner of the coveted inaugural Beach Cleanup Cup, and I'll say, little shout-out, only council member with decorated trash bucket is council member Justin Cummings with 37 volunteers. So congratulations, Councilmember Cummings. Your award will be delivered to your office at City Hall that you can proudly display. And so just really, in all seriousness, a huge thank you to each and every one of you for helping support. And just also, a huge thank you to the volunteers that came out this summer to help all of you. We really thank you and appreciate your efforts. So kudos to all of you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tony, and all your whole staff, Rachel, everybody. It was great to have... Your staff was a huge support, showing up on weekends and after work and everything else. So it was really, I know you guys spent a lot of time to get this, make this happen. And so, yeah, I really appreciate, you know, you guys putting this together. It was super fun, and I think there's a lot of new beach cleanup fans that could be recruited. So, you know, I don't know how we make it happen. I know Saver Shores does theirs, but certainly, a lot of people are really interested in continuing to do the work. So thanks to everyone that helped on your department, because we couldn't have had this fun event without you. So thanks again. And thanks to all the council members for bringing people down and getting the beach cleaned up, for sure. Well done. Thank you, guys. Have a good day. Okay, next up, we have a mayor proclamation, a mayor role proclamation. And this is for declaring October 1st, 2021 as Chris Schneider Day. And Chris, I'm excited to read this for you. Whereas Chris Schneider, Assistant Director in the City of Santa Cruz Public Works Department, has announced his retirement. And whereas Chris Schneider began his career with the city on March 23rd, 1987, thereby contributing over 34 years of uninterrupted service to the people of Santa Cruz. And whereas Chris Schneider's light sense of humor, realistic approach, and decades of experience have made him a respected leader and mentor to various staff in the city. And whereas Chris Schneider has been awarded an incalculable amount of awards throughout his career, and they will continue to adorn the administration and engineering office as a reminder of his legacy. And whereas Chris Schneider's project-focused approach may have been viewed as inflexible, but it was a great asset in his delivery of bridge trails, roundabouts, and intersection improvements, which improve the quality of life for everyone in Santa Cruz. And whereas Chris Schneider has been a project wizard, always able to find a way to do more with less to deliver projects more amazing than envisioned. And whereas Chris Schneider has led and contributed to so many critical projects that one cannot pass a public works project that he has not touched. And whereas Chris Schneider has attended more ribbon cuttings than you can count, represented the city at countless public meetings and responded to thousands of community requests, always, well, almost always with a smile. And whereas Chris Schneider has a love for chocolate, which helped him maintain, even jumping between field studies, project meetings, budget meetings, interagency meetings, and council meetings. And whereas Chris Schneider's dedicated work will continue to be utilized and appreciated as people walk, bike, or drive over the 2,000-plus engineering projects completed during his career, such as Red, I meant 7, 8, and 9, beach area roundabouts, San Lorenzo River Trestle Bridge, Branch of Forty Creek Bridge Multi-Use Trail, Murray Street Bridge, Highway 1 and 9 Expansion, Arona Gulch Multi-Use Path, West Clifford Players, repairs, and countless paving, landfill, and sewer storm drain projects. And whereas Chris Schneider's last day of service to the city will be Friday, October 1st, 2021, now, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz do hereby proclaim October 1st, 2021 as Chris Schneider Day in the City of Santa Cruz and urge all his... and urge all his colleagues and fellow community members to join me in thanking him for his years of service, recognizing his exceptional leadership and substantial contributions to the Public Works Department and to the smooth operation and safety of our city, and wishing him well on his retirement. Chris, just so thankful for everything you've done for our community. And would love to, you know, if you have a few words. And Mark, I don't know if you have, but just want to open it up. And again, just recognize everything you've done, Chris. It's been amazing.
Yeah, thank you very much for recognizing me today. It really has been a wonderful career for me. Able to work with and meet so many great people over the years and have gotten so much support in getting all these projects done. That's a long list. There are still a few on that list that are not done, but hopefully they're moving along well enough that they'll get done in the next few years. I, you know, had a choice between going to Santa Barbara or going to Santa Cruz back in 1997. And so happy I picked Santa Cruz. It's been a great place to live. And I'm just happy to have contributed this to these projects of the community where I do live and play all the time. I'm looking forward to less stress because it's not always easy getting these things done. But also, it's been exciting. I mean, there's just been a lot of wonderful people I've worked with, the council, the commissions, and in particularly, the staff that I've worked with over the years. They've just all been a bunch of wonderful people. And there is a great team of engineers and technical staff at Public Works that are going to, you know, do a lot of great things in the future here. You know, and also just thankful for my parents for bringing us to the United States when I was a baby and encouraged me to become an engineer and go to college and all those things. I wish that they had had an opportunity to, you know, see me graduate and become an engineer and become the person that they had hoped for. Again, it's just, you know, it's just been great. And I really appreciate your guys' support.
Thank you, Chris. Happy to, Mark, please, please go ahead.
Yeah, you know, Chris is an amazing employee. I've had the opportunity to work with him 21 years. And he just finds a way to get it done, and it's great. We've all benefited from that, and he has developed a strong team. He's really focused on building that team. He's had to do it several times as he's seen people grow and get promoted and sometimes move on, and then he'll rebuild them. But we have a very solid team. And I'm really just thankful for the opportunity I had to work with Chris this past time and watch his orchestra of pulling the funding together and getting projects permitted through multiple different agencies. And very complicated projects sometimes took years, but he had the persistence and the wherewithal to get it done. And so I just want to congratulate him on his upcoming retirement and wish him all the best. He's done, he's really delivered for Public Works. Like you said, anytime that you walk or ride a bike or drive a vehicle, you're either going to drive over a bridge that he's had his hands on or an intersection or road repair and that type of thing. So he's just trying to keep everybody safe, and it's just been great. So Chris, I wish, please join me in wishing Chris all the best in his upcoming retirement. I just hope all the best for you.
Thank you.
And Martine Bernal, has his hand up?
Yes, thank you. Yes, Chris, I also wanted to just really thank you so much for all of your hard work and dedication all of these years. You know, Chris is very tenacious, and, you know, the list of accomplishment is pretty tremendous. And I think as Mark mentioned, a lot of what gets the public's attention are those controversial projects or those sort of big issues. But so much of what the city does, the vast majority of what the city does are the day-to-day things that we all take for granted. Like when you wake up in the morning and you can flush the toilet or open up, go out in the street. And that's what a lot of what Public Works does. And a lot of what Chris really also focused on, which is making sure that we have the quality of life and the level of services that are really high in our community. And so that, and also the other part of Chris, what he's done is really worked a great staff out in his, to really take that on and to continue that high level of service. So again, thank you, Chris. You'll be missed, for sure.
Thank you.
Council members, any comments or anything? Lots of thumbs up. Justin, go ahead. And Martine, next, after Justin.
Yeah, Chris, I'll just say, you know, thank you so much for all your years of service. There's a lot of really great projects that have come through. And I know that, for example, the Trestle Bridge, when that got finished, so many people were just expressing how much better it was and how much they loved the improvements. And additionally, with the rail trail, I know so many people are enjoying that space along with all the other places that people probably don't think of, you know, when it comes to getting around the city. And since you, so many years of working on those projects and making sure they came to the community, just wanted to say thanks and congratulations on your retirement. And hope to see you around more.
Martine?
I too just wanted to say congratulations to you, Chris, and how much I've appreciated working with you and the legacy to leave behind in terms of the impact that you've had in such a positive way to our community. I've always just really appreciated your professionalism, just your ability to stay the course and to offer information to us as best as we can to make these decisions that are good for our community. And I just, I enjoyed your story about your parents, how incredible. And of course, they're, I'm sure, looking down, proud. I wish you the absolute best in your retirement. And it's nice to know that you've had the ability to mentor other folks so that the legacy lives on in that way, too. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
I'll just add my appreciation here. You know, Chris, your knowledge and experience, your tenacity and your commitment to, you know, public transit and getting transportation projects done, getting, moving them through under very challenging circumstances often, is really unparalleled. You know, I just appreciate the support that you've given me as a council member and also as a Commissioner for the RTC. You know, even when I'm being difficult, you are, you know, very patient and helpful. So really, really well deserved. And yes, what a wonderful legacy as Councilmember. Watkins said, I hope you get to enjoy some of the fruits of your labor by getting out there on the rail trail and out around the town. We'll be thinking of you and looking forward to hearing what happens next for you. And just wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Councilmember Conterrey Johnson?
Thank you, Chris. I haven't had the opportunity to work with you for very long. But from what I hear and I see, you are clearly very committed for all your years of service and everything that you've brought to our community. And I was really touched by your story. It really resonated. So thank you for all your work and congratulations, and hope to cross paths on the rail trail.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, Chris and I ran into each other a couple of weeks ago out on the porch of a local restaurant. That was kind of a fun little night just to chat. And I could see that you are ready to be done and have more time to do the things like bike riding and other stuff. So go out and enjoy. And yeah, thanks for everything you've done. So enjoy. We'll see you around town.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks. And, you know, I'm not done. I'll potentially be working on more local projects, issues, et cetera, as I continue to live here, not going anywhere. So I do hope I see you all as time moves on. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Congrats. Okay, we have one more mayoral proclamation, which is a big one. This is declaring August 26th, 2021, as Martine Bernal Day. And it is my pleasure, Martine, to read this proclamation to you. Martine, just as a note, Martine was my boss when I did get to the city, whatever, how many years ago that was. So it's a kind of a crazy situation that I'm reading this proclamation right now, Martine, for you. Whereas Martine Bernal retires after more than 30 years of dedicated public service to the cities of San Jose, Mountain View, and the best of all, Santa Cruz, with a service on service, community, sacrifice, and caring. And whereas Martine Bernal has logged incalculable hours in City Council meetings, most in the past two years, along a bevy of mayors, 11, as well as 22 unique and distinctively fun council members with patience to diplomacy and compromise. And whereas Martine Bernal has survived the above, as well as teaching his blind uncle how to drive a tractor, incrementing his not-so-super-secret monkey password in numeric increments, the origin of his monkey collection remains murky, and crashing his bike at least four times, that we know of, once while teaching his son how to ride properly, and once that resulted in enough metal being put in his wrist that he triggers TSA alarm bells at every airport. And whereas Martine Bernal has brought to our city the Amgen Tour of California, the Santa Cruz Warriors, Kaiser Arena, Flurry Seal galore, roundabouts, rail trail improvements, five successful revenue measures, new and renovated embers and green bike lanes, the latter of which we may have done to try to reduce his bike accidents and therefore his medical bills. And whereas Martine Bernal wrapped up his amazing career here at the city by leading our way through an intense local wildfire as well as a global pandemic. And whereas all of Martine Bernal's colleagues at the City of Santa Cruz and throughout our region, former and present, wish him the very best retirement and every success in his future efforts, including during the, doing the Bernal family laundry up to exacting standards, making delicious drinks and cakes for tea parties with his granddaughter and her stuffed animals, not driving his mountain bike off of embankments or into mountains and things without breaking gas or water mains, of course, all with the requisite permits, and generally relaxing and spending quality time with his family. Now therefore, I, Don Meyer, Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim August 26th, 2021, as Martine Bernal Day in the City of Santa Cruz and call upon all of his colleagues, fellow community members, to join me in thanking him for his quiet leadership and exemplary service to the City of Santa Cruz and wishing him the happiest and safest, please be careful on your bike, Martine, of retirement. And certainly well deserved. Martine, thank you for everything you've done. I'd like to ask the, to please turn on their cameras. Because I know many of them, you know, are here for you today, to celebrate you today, and want to make sure they can, you know, give you a virtual ovation, a virtual thumbs up, whatever they wish. So department heads, let's do that virtual ovation right now. We wish we could be in person with you, Martine, but I know you have a lot of colleagues who are, you know, really of mixed minds today, I'm sure. So a mixed emotions. Oh, and Andy's holding up things upside down, Andy. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule. So I'm happy if there's any department heads that would like to say a few things, please feel free. We're actually running right on time, so turn on and I'll call on you and as well as my council colleagues. Chris Schneider.
I'm not a department head, but I have to, you know, pay back to Martine for his kind comments. It's been a pleasure working with Martine over the years as Assistant City Manager and City Manager. You know, that's part of the success, my success has been, you know, his involvement in helping move things along as well. Our boys were in elementary school together. And so as a result of that, we ended up becoming friends and riding together over the years. Not so much since he's been a city manager. I think at times, it's just been too much, taken too much of his time away from fun stuff. So I'm looking forward to us riding, being able to ride together again. So thanks, Martine.
Thank you, Chris. Any others? Rosemary?
So I've probably not been here as long as some of the other people who are on this call or watching today. But I do want to say that, you know, I've had the luxury of working in four different places for four different bosses and four different kinds of bosses. And I really appreciated the kind of hands-off and very supportive engagement that Martine has with his department head. I think it's been a really, the privilege to work for somebody who has as much trust in you and who engages with you as a kind of a colleague and an equal, advises and supports, and really helps you to do the best that you can be. So I remember when I came to this department or to this job in this interview, they asked me what the heck I was trying to do with my life. And I said, I'm looking for interesting, challenging work, and you definitely have it here. And I said, and I'm looking for an organization that wants me to do what I'm capable of doing. And Martine and Tina and Laura and all of the staff here have really provided it, and it's been a privilege. So thank you so much. And I appreciate everything that you've done for me and for my organization and for the city.
And Mark?
Yeah, I just want to echo those comments. I actually first worked with Martine back at the City of San Jose when he was out of the city manager's office and I was in Public Works. And he came around doing some sort of interview or asking questions. I really didn't think much of what he was working on and didn't think where he was going to. And you never know. And 10 years later, I'm working for the City of Santa Cruz as he is. And he's the Assistant City Manager and becomes the City Manager. So, but he's a great individual to work for. Cares so much about the organization and the city in the good times and in the hard times when we had to tighten our belts. Wasn't, he was very straight with whatever we needed to do, and we carried that through. And just pretty, very strong leadership, but allowed the department heads to manage their departments, which is critical because nobody can manage everything. And I think being able to do that and trust in those individuals, he got excellent results. And I just appreciate that opportunity to work for you, Martine. It's been a great, and I wish you all the best. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. I have Councilmember Watkins and then Councilmember Cummings.
I appreciate hearing what the department heads have to say. I think that's really telling of your leadership, Martine, and what an incredible organization and legacy you have as well here. I too want to just, you know, congratulate you and thank you for your service. It is not an easy job by any means. Having now seen for the four years that I've, four and a half years that I've been on council, your role and your availability and your willingness to stay calm amongst a lot of high energy and to really understand the importance of maintaining our city function and what we're doing and how to best serve our community. You absolutely deserve this time to enjoy your family and to enjoy other hobbies and experiences safely, hopefully, as you go biking. But really wishing you all the well. And I just, you know, how much I've had a chance to learn from you as well. Even though there were things that we maybe not always agreed on, it was always really professional and you always helped me understand your perspective and respected that. And getting used to saying, Martine, to the only other Martine I've had to work with. So anyways, congratulations and wishing you the absolute best.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, congratulations on all these years of service and work to, you know, communities, not just in Santa Cruz, but throughout, you know, this region. But most importantly, Santa Cruz, because it's really, you know, being a city manager here, after seeing, you know, and learning more about what your role is, it's not an easy job and definitely not an easy job in Santa Cruz because we are a very vocal and passionate community. And it takes a special person to be, try to meet the needs of everything that's coming forward. And, you know, you've been able to be there during really tough times and help us recover from the first recession and have been, you know, really working with us to try to keep us out of going into a deeper recession after the pandemic. And having, you know, spent time working with you last year, which was probably one of the most challenging years in the history of the city, it was, you know, really great to be able to have somebody and to know that we had a city manager who was really putting, you know, workers first and the community first. And so just want to thank you for everything that you've been able to do. And so just want to thank you for everything that you've been able to do to help the community, and I know we'll probably be calling you even in retirement, so look forward to seeing you around and working with you more in the future.
Councilmember Calentari Johnson.
Thank you, Martine, for certainly everything that you've contributed to the city, your leadership over the last decade, and I want to thank you personally for, for the support you've given me as a new council member, a newly elected official, just always being available and super responsive and answering my questions that maybe are, some of them are probably just so obvious to you, but just, you know, always breaking things down for me and being available for me. So I really, really appreciated the support I got from you over the last almost year, we're coming up on a year, and I wish you all the best, and it is a small community, so we'll be, we'll be moving out of the way as you ride your bike and waving hi. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bruner.
Thank you. Martine, I also share Councilmember Calentari Johnson's sentiments, being a newly elected council member. I just want to thank your leadership, your, your support, very supportive, professional, calm and patient and always available via text, via call, and to explain even the details and the big picture and historical context valuable in so many situations and so many questions that I had. So I don't know if you remember, we first met when you were Assistant City Manager, and I, I think I sat on a task force, the downtown task force or whatnot, and I remember that's when I met Mark Detle and, and you, and you always had some good insights, so I appreciate that, and I thank you for what you've brought in this challenging month that we've had and always directing me in the right way, so thank you. I hope to continue running into you and your adorable granddaughter, and I wish you all the best.
Councilmember Golda.
I don't really have a lot new, new things to add, but I too want to thank you for all of your years of service to the city, and I think before I was on council, I didn't realize quite how much you did, and your calm presence, City Hall is always appreciated. I know sometimes people come in hot and, you know, everyone's very passionate that's on council and in the community, and I feel like your, just your humble, calm presence really simmers everything down and gets the work done that needs to be done, and I'll definitely miss seeing you in that office, but I'm sure I'll keep seeing you out on the trails and in the community, and I'm just happy you're able to enjoy your retirement after all these years of hard work and service, so thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
I'll just add my, my congratulations and appreciation for all of your time that you've spent dedicated to the city and, you know, to, to really working in the public interest, and to say, our loss is Penelope's gain, and here are other family members too, and that, you know, well deserved that you get to spend time with them and do what you love, and we'll be here, so we'll, I'm sure, see you out and about in town, and like others have said, we'll call on you for that, the universal lifeline help when we are looking for, for answers. So take good care.
Well, I know we'll celebrate, celebrate you again, I'm saying, Martine, at City Hall, but there goes my dog, but I just wanted to again say thank you for everything you've done for the city over the years, and we look forward to, to doing some more celebrating with you on Thursday, and, you know, just wish you all the best, you know, enjoy Santa Cruz. You get to be around town and not worry about all the list of things that you probably see when you go out and about, so it's somebody else's job, at least for a while, so, yeah, enjoy your time and your family. Congrats.
Thank you, thank you. I just, just want to say a few brief things. Thank you very much, that was, that was very, very, very nice, I very much appreciate it. And just really briefly, it really has been an honor and work for the city of Santa Cruz, truly, and I've had a very rewarding public service career, and most of it is noted here in Santa Cruz, and for good reason. You know, I've just been really fortunate to work with so many great people, you know, that are talented, caring, and really dedicated to their work and to making Santa Cruz a better place, everything from elected officials, from our city, other cities, from the region, community members, so many community members, department heads, managers, supervisors, employees at the city, colleagues in the, in the profession. It's really been incredible, and I really owe a lot of thanks to them, because ultimately, you know, it's, it was teamwork, it was everybody working together, everybody's passion that made things happen. And, you know, Santa Cruz is a small community, as was noted, you, if you talk to anyone, eventually there'll be some connection that comes, that arises, it's, it's very common. And it wasn't unusual for me, a lot of people watch city council, meaning more than you would expect for some reason, so it's not uncommon for me to go around the city for people to, to comment. A lot of the comments I got were, you know, people feeling somewhat sorry for me or saying, "You have the hardest job in the world," and that might be true, however, I have to say, it is probably one of the most rewarding jobs you can have, it really truly is, and I'm certainly very, very proud of the tremendous accomplishments that have been made, and the accomplishments that happen in, in local government really happen over many, many years, they don't happen overnight. And the other part that's really, really critical is responding to crises, and in Santa Cruz, we have them, whether they're natural crises or latest with the pandemics or fires or whatever, economic, whatever it might be, and being able to respond to those things and take care of the community is really super essential and critical, and I think, I feel really, really, really proud of what we've done in that arena as well. We're very lucky to be able to live in this community and to raise, have raised my family here, and I do look forward to continuing to see all of you around town, and it's been, guess, two years since I haven't broken a bone, so I hope to keep, keep that up, so I'll enjoy the community and I'll try to stay safe, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Martine, we will see you in the courtyard in a couple days. Okay, we'll move on to our next set of agenda items. I have a few announcements, and then we will move on to our regular meeting. Today's meeting is being broadcast on Community Television Channel Twenty-Five and streaming on the city's website, cityofsancruz.com. If you wish to comment on agenda item today, instructions are provided on your screen. We will provide these instructions throughout the meeting whenever we move into an agenda item that will be opened up for public comment. Please note, public comment is heard only on items council is taking act and not regular updates and reports. The items that will be open for public comment during today's meeting are numbers thirteen through thirty-one, excuse me, with the exception of item twenty-seven on our agenda. I'd like to ask the council members if there are any statements of disqualification today. Being none, I'd like to ask-
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sonia. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Item number twenty-nine, there are specific components to downtown businesses, so out of an abundance of caution, I will not be participating in item twenty-nine.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll make a note of that during that item. I'd like to ask the city clerk to announce any additions and deletions.
There are none.
We'll move on to oral communications. Oral communication is an opportunity for members of the community to speak to us on items that are not on the agenda. Oral communications will occur immediately after agenda item number thirty-one today. If you wish to make a comment during oral communications, please call in during, excuse me, please call in towards the end of item thirty-one. Move on to our city attorney providing a report on our closed session.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Myers, members of city council. This morning, the council met in closed session at ten AM by Zoom to discuss the following items. The first item was public employment involving the city manager recruitment. Item two was a conference with labor negotiators the council met with and gave instructions to their negotiator concerning the SEIU temporary employees. Item three was an item of significant exposure to litigation, the council received a report from the city attorney on that item. Item four involves three items of pending litigation. First is the matter of City of Santa Cruz versus Richard L. Santee et al. The second is the matter of Don Stevens et al. versus the Regents of the University of California. The third item is the matter entitled Habitat and Watership Caretakers et al. versus the Regents of the University of California. Cases are currently pending in the Santa Cruz County Superior Court. The last item was real property negotiations, council received a report from its negotiator and gave instructions concerning the property at One Two Five Coral Street. There was no reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Kundadi. I'll move on to the city manager report now, item number eleven. The city manager will report and provide updates, city's business, COVID-nineteen response and events.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and city council, a number of items today, very briefly. I'll start with first, just some, I just got some recent information regarding COVID from the county, some good news, the, they're letting us know that the reproduction rate virus, the RT number, is now under zero and is projected to continue to decline, and that means that the number of individuals that are being infected, they're being transmitted, infections being transmitted to is, is declining, and so the infection rate has slowed and its rate has increased, and the fourteen-day projection is now for a very steep decline in the rate, so that's good, that means that we're looking at infections out there and the steep decline is good. And then the other, just wanted to note that there is a, on August twenty-fifth, and Mayor, you might want to add more about this, is the, on August twenty-fifth at five PM will be the second Mayor's Green Economy Roundtable on Green Jobs in the Bill of the Government, but just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. And then I'd like to ask our police chief to kind of do an update on the, you all recall we had that ride-out event this past weekend, where we had all those riders, many of which wreaked havoc on our community, and so I'd like to ask our, I'm sorry, if a police chief to kind of comment on, on some of the fallout expected there or the impacts of that.
Thank you, Martine, I appreciate the opportunity to communicate with Mayor Myers and the rest of the city council on what took place over the weekend. If I could back up just a little bit, on April twenty-first of last, this year, I met via phone with the organizer and discussed the event from the previous year and told him that he needed a permit to have another event here in our town because of the behaviors of what took place the previous year. He said he understood that and would try. Evidently, that was not done. And then I was alerted to this particular event the evening before from a council member who text messaged me a screenshot of a, a ride, not necessarily alerting us to the scope of the ride, but that there was going to be a ride. And we regularly don't monitor people's private social media accounts or public media accounts unless there's a criminal predicate that would allow us to take a look, recognizing that crime is taking place. If that is the case, then we can mark social media accounts. That was not the case here, and certainly we don't want to be in a position where we're spying on everybody in our community without a criminal predicate. So the morning of the event, it became apparent this was a repeat of the one last year. So myself and my day watch sergeant met with the organizer at about eleven o'clock in the morning, including wearing body worn cameras, to videotape and to have a discussion with him about the event and asked for him to give clear direction to those that were there, and it became apparent that he could not cancel this event, to stay on the right side of the street, obey traffic laws, that obviously was not done. Recognizing scope and the size of the event, he told us it's going to be about five thousand people, and it certainly appeared that way from going over Harvey West Park where there was a large setup on city property. And we put out information via social media to as many people as we could as quickly as possible that there would be traffic problems within our city. We also immediately began calling in extra officers to try to manage the problem. You have to remember that we have about five to ten officers working any day, and that morning, we had five officers working on a Saturday morning. It takes a while to get people to come in, as you can imagine, they're getting off of work at one or two or three in the morning, and so to call them and wake them up to get them back into work could be a pretty, pretty big task. We also met with the California Highway Patrol, Capitola Police, and the Santa Cruz Sheriff's Office, and we all discussed this event, since we didn't at that point know the route was, we did expect it to go into other jurisdictions, and we agreed on the tactics, the enforcement profile of how to manage this large of a group, and we also made sure that there were assets in place in case of a critical incident taking place in, in, in and amongst the ride. We agreed on that, we worked together, kept in constant communication with EPD as the lead, since it was mostly in our jurisdiction, and we were able to manage it fairly well, given the fact that there was enormous traffic problems as a result. It was certainly ten miles, what we would normally see on a very sunny, a hot beach day, where it takes a lot of time to move through town. I sat the, Murray and Seabright and timed it, and it took about twenty to twenty-five minutes for all the riders to get through an intersection. That's unacceptable in our community, especially when it's preventable, and we, we all recognize that. We also experienced a threefold increase in calls for service during the day, and that can be, as you can imagine, pretty difficult, trying to manage all those calls for service as well as additional five thousand people riding down our streets and some on the sidewalks. Overall, most of the riders were, other than traffic violations, compliant and, and were there to enjoy themselves with their families. However, there were several of the riders who decided that they would take it into their own hands and that they would create problems, and so we responded to those incidents, trying to manage those and protect citizens as much as possible with about five officers working the entire city, and still handling calls for service and, and so forth. Most of the calls for service were traffic-related or disturbances, arguments between riders and motorists. There were, however, there was, however, one assault that we documented, and there very well could have been more. One gentleman was assaulted downtown trying to block riders from riding up the sidewalk, and that is completely unacceptable, we are working that case, we are trying to identify through videotape and body worn cameras, we had volunteers close by who tried to intervene to prosecute that person, and we are able to identify him, we absolutely will prosecute them to the fullest extent of the law. We also, at the end of the event, which took about four hours to get through the entire city, going from Harvey West Park downtown out to the west side and then back over to the east side, out to Seventh Street, into Sheriff's area, and then back down SoCal. We got ahold of the organizer, I brought him over to the police department, we cited him for having a large, major event without a permit, I also called the sheriff's office and they cited him also. We are continuing to work with the city attorney to explore other options for civil recourse on suing him or leveraging things, or compensating us for the overtime that we had to pay to bring people in from home, as well as the staff time of people coming in, including managers on the weekend to come in- to come in and handle this, this situation. In the future, he took, according to his own words, "I take full responsibility and this is my last year." I hope that is the case, but rather than just hoping, we need to go farther than that and make sure that that does not happen again without adequate permitting, as well as a traffic safety plan in place to make sure that it is managed correctly, if it were to take place. But at this point, I am certainly not interested in approving a plan like that without the enormous amount of resources and the appropriate permits being pulled and approved by the city. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Questions from council members? Councilmember Calder?
I just want to say thank you, Andy, for that very thorough update. I know, I'm sure, just like the rest of the council, received a lot of correspondence from neighbors, business owners, community members and family members with reports of behaviors that were just unacceptable. And it's just disappointing because I think all of us really enjoy biking and would really like to see, you know, a positive, bike-friendly, family-friendly event. Unfortunately, there was just, this did not appear to be that. And, you know, I crossed paths with them at several points during the day and I would, you know, agree with the community on that. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Andy?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just echo the same thing, Chief Mills. Yeah, I just got a lot of, saw a lot of people and people were, you know, it did not feel like a safe situation. It didn't feel like a friendly group of people. It was really, really upsetting to a lot of people. So I appreciate your work and certainly really questioned whether this organizer is really someone that we would want to, you know, really invite back to Santa Cruz at all. I mean, if, you know, it's, it's just, yeah, it just was not a good event. And it was disturbing to see some of the, the one individual that was beat up. And then I've also heard of other folks, you know, having their car doors kicked in and, I don't know, just really not appropriate behavior. So I appreciate, but I also acknowledge that trying to address something that large with the few staff that we had would have been very, very difficult and dangerous for our, for our police force. So I appreciate sort of your, and the limitations that you were left with that day. So thank you for, and please thank your officers for their work that day. It must have been pretty, pretty tough to deal with.
Councilmember Cummings?
Thank you, and I share the same sentiments, I think, that many of, like Mayor Myers, or Calder have expressed, and I think many people in the community as well. And, you know, I don't know if there's follow-up conversations with the individual who organizes, but my understanding is that the individual who was assaulted downtown into having to go to the hospital and was homeless and, you know, for a homeless individual who's really trying to look out for the community to, you know, then be assaulted and, you know, understanding that our medical industry, you know, that organizer, that community is wanting to put up some money to help pay for his bills, I think that would be a good, you know, a gesture of good faith. And I don't know if there's anything that, any way that that can be included with, followed through the city attorney's office. But, you know, I think that this organizer didn't do their part in trying to create a safe event and as a result, members of our community were hurt. And I think that they should be held accountable for the pain that was inflicted on people who were just trying to enjoy their day.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments or questions? Martin, is that all on your report?
Can I ask Lee Butler to just do a very brief update on homelessness?
Oh, great, thank you. Welcome, Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Myers and councilmembers, hello. We are planning to give a larger update at the next regular council meeting, but just briefly, we are exploring the approach for safe sleeping as was identified as part of the Camping Services and Standards Ordinance. We are also communicating with Housing Matters regarding their operations there and the continuation of existing services and the incorporation of new services through the 120 units of permanent supportive housing that they have at the rear of that site. And we're also looking at coordinating with the state as well. As you all know, the $14.5 million that was identified for the City of Santa Cruz to use towards homelessness services. We've been considering potential options for the use of that money and we're looking to coordinate with both John Laird and Mark Stone's offices so that we can understand what that money, what the timelines are and how that can potentially be utilized. We also recently commented on the state's Project Home Key upcoming grant considerations. They, as you know, are releasing round two and they asked cities for, and counties for comments. And some of the things that we commented on were the potential for a, a specific pot of money for our region, rather than one that would be competitive throughout the state, as well as desired to allow for a broader spectrum of uses. As you all know, the initial round focused on conversion of residential properties or motel properties into permanent supportive housing. And we were desiring some additional flexibility in how those funds could potentially be used. So we're looking for that notice of funding availability to be released in the next month or so, pending any delays that may happen in kind of the timeline that we would anticipate. And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Is there any questions from council members on this? Not seen. Great, well, thank you, Lee, and we look forward to a broader update next, in two weeks. Thanks very much. Is that it, Martin?
Well, that's it, thank you, have any questions?
Any questions for anything, for city management?
Martin, I have to say, it's your last city manager report, so thanks again. Little, little thing throughout the day. Our next item is, I'd just like to call on the city clerk to provide any updates to the calendar at this time, to the city council calendar.
I have a minute.
Great. And I'd just like to-
I wanted to, if I could, comment on the, I have had a number of members of the public who've still been reaching out to me regarding the SB 35 study session. And given that this is kind of like the only forum where we can all kind of discuss these things together, I put together a motion based on council or based on community input and I sent it over to Bonnie Sutcliffe. But really what it is, it's just trying to ensure that some information and concerns that's being brought up by the community are addressed. So I wanted to move that, that, to direct staff to provide the following information in addition to any other information being provided at the seventh study session. One, the procedure for designating the city council as the city's approval body for any SB 35 applications, requests for density bonuses. Two, the city council's role in acting to approve or deny any proposed density bonus requests for concessions and waivers. And three, the requirement as a part of any SB 35 application requesting a density bonus for the council, like, to receive financial documentation provided by the applicant supporting the proposed density bonus request. And so this is just to ensure that this information, in addition to any other information, is included in the, in the presentation on September 7th.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I'll second that. I appreciate the most, I think that it, it does provide some additional detail for clarity that I think some of us at least are looking, have been looking for in my conversations with folks around the E31 water project in particular, because that is the first streamlining application we've received and this is really new, new terrain. And I know Vice Mayor Brunner suggested doing a study session like this, so thank you for that. I do think that it would be helpful to make sure that, that these areas, you know, we get some clarity and are able to have some discussion on the 7th. So, yeah, I absolutely support this. Thank you, councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, I was going to make an announcement, actually, that we have studied, we have, we have scheduled a study session just as part of this item, just so that the public is aware. The study session has been announced and the staff is focused on the exact things in the motion. So that has already been directed to staff in terms of, you know, ways as, at least in my ability to call a meeting, so we've done a special meeting with these exact items. That was called last week. We have notified many of the neighborhood groups that have been watching this process and are concerned about the development in their community there. So we certainly have already put this in motion and, so, yeah, we'll go ahead and do a vote. The other thing I just wanted to announce on this, because these are both special study sessions, well, one's a public hearing and one is a special meeting. We'll also be holding a public hearing on the district election process. That is scheduled for next week, next Tuesday, August 31st at 4:30 PM. And that will include a presentation by staff as well as our demographer and provide information and ability for people to participate in on our district election process, which we are just initiating. And then secondly, yeah, September 7th at 7:30 PM, we will be holding a special session on the SB 35 law, which obviously is now being utilized for one of, developing our community. So there will be a briefing on that from our staff. And Lee, I don't know if you have any updates on that at all, if you want to share anything on the agenda, but certainly that will be starting at 7:30 PM on, on September 7th, which is a Tuesday. Lee, do you have anything to add at all? And I don't want to get out of, over my skis here, Tony. I just want to make sure that people know what's going to be on that, on that special study session.
No, I think it's been adequately captured. We're going to cover SB 35 as well as, there have been some legislative changes to SB 35. That government code section has changed, so the subsequent changes to that government code section as well as density bonus information.
Thank you, and thank you, Lee, to your staff for making this happen. I know that we sort of sprung this on you pretty, pretty quickly. So appreciate your ability to get your staff together and provide that, that study session for folks to participate in. And we will be taking public comment during that, during that study session. Councilmember Watkins?
No, I, I want to thank you also, Mayor and Lee, for, yeah, the staff's ability to bring this together. I think the community has definitely been asking for a study session on this. And I wonder if, if, Lee, you're the best person to kind of maybe forward our questions in advance that we've gotten from constituents about SB 35 and that, although it has been directed in this motion that we can include some of those so that you have kind of a purview into what some of the community is concerned or, kind of, some of their questions are about.
Of course, that'd be fine.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. We'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Calder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. First up, these items are 13 through 24 on our agenda today. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, now is the time to call in if you want to comment on items 13 through 24. Instructions are on your screen. Please remember to mute your streaming device, press star nine to raise your hand and listen for the cues saying you have been unmuted. Acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled by a council member for further discussion. Are there any council members who wish to comment on or pull any items? Councilmember Cummings and Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Thank you, I'd like to comment on item number 15 and pull item number 23.
Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
I comment with for 15 as well.
And Vice Mayor Brunner?
The same, comment on 15 and item 23.
Want to pull that also?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be pulled. And Councilmember Brown?
I have questions on item 20 and 28. I don't need to pull them.
20 and 28, okay, great. Okay, so we'll go ahead and we have, item number 23 will be pulled. So we're going to move, go ahead and take comments and questions from council. Why don't we start with comments? Three councilmembers have comments on item 15, which is the City of Santa Cruz Climate Action Plan 2020 Closeout Report. And I'll start with Councilmember Cummings and then Councilmember Calentari Johnson and then Vice Mayor Brunner.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my appreciation to Tiffany and to everyone in the community for all of their hard work on the 2020 Climate Action Plan. Just reading through that agenda report and if people haven't had a chance to look at it, I encourage everyone in our community to really take a look at that because we have, you know, through that report, we've been demonstrating that we're making some real progress towards reducing our carbon footprint in the state of California and, you know, on our climate as a whole. And so I just really want to express my gratitude to Tiffany for all the work that she's done because this isn't easy. And I know people want to see us, you know, reduce all carbon emissions immediately, but, you know, it takes a lot of work to figure out what kind of projects we can implement at the city level and make our city, our city an example. And I know we've won numerous awards over the past few years and really is attributed to all the hard work that Tiffany has put into this and our other city staff and our community. So again, thank you, and I'm looking forward to our 2030 Climate Action Plan and us really trying to keep on this track of reducing our carbon emissions.
Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Thank you, yeah, I'd like to echo those sentiments as well. Thank you, Tiffany, and your team and everyone in the community who has done so much work. I was just really blown away by the indicators that highlighted we almost, across the board, have met or close to met or exceeded so many indicators. And then the focus on equity, that really stood out to me as well, that, that we, we are looking at equity outcomes as well as our process and ensuring equity in our process. So just thank you for the thoughtfulness and clearly it has had an impact already in our community towards getting us to where we need to be. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. And I have Vice Mayor Brunner as well.
Thank you. I just, I know this is a closeout report, but I felt after reading this agenda item that I wanted to comment and just say thank you to the commitment to equitable climate action through the various plans and resolutions that went into this. And it's pretty amazing, so thank you. Thank you to Tiffany and thank you to the team.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Brown, I'll go on to your questions. I think you said 20 and 28, but I think we're at the end of the year, just to make sure here. 28 is on our general business. Did you mean another item on consent?
Sorry, one sec. Let me just, I, I thought it was 28, I'm so sorry. I am talking about 20, oh, yeah, no, got it, sorry. So, so item 20 then, I'll just do questions about that. I thought 28 was on the consent agenda as well.
Okay, item 20.
Yeah, okay. So this is about, for those who are out there who don't have the agenda right in front of you, this is related to the Riverwalk lighting project. of you, this is related to the Riverwalk lighting project that we are hoping to get moving. And the, and I wanted to say thank you to the public works staff for really taking seriously the, the recommendations here, and, and really taking steps to make sure that we are doing everything we can to comply with, you know, Dark Sky's guidelines around, you know, wildlife and, and really, and human impacts of lighting on the river. And so I just, I do have a couple of questions that are a little bit detailed, sorry I didn't get them to you in advance, but I just wanted to kind of see if I could get a sense of where the timelines are at and monitoring to kind of see how, to see if the, the measures that you have proposed will achieve the goals. And so, just in, I guess, a summary question, and then I can, if the appropriate person would be, I guess, Mark, I'll send you, send you my specific questions, just to kind of have a little more conversation. But just, if you could give a, give us an overview of the environmentally friendly modifications that you, you know, you, you did include here as a result of that review, just, you know, just kind of the basics, so we know what it is that you're looking at specifically that, that we should be paying attention to.
Okay, well, this is Chris Schneider, Assistant Director of Public Works. I've been working with my staff and with a lighting consultant and expert on, you know, modeling the lighting that we originally proposed for the levee. And we started with the existing lights on the levee between SoCal and Water versus this project is between Water and Highway One on both sides of the levee. And as part of that process, and working at International Dark Sky, the local chapter, you know, we made some modifications. And we made further modifications after we took it to the commission and after we had that discussion. So we've included a different light that is one that actually has been used on Mission Street for decorative lighting, had some very positive reviews from International Dark Sky. And it's a recessed light, it has a deep skirt, focuses the light more linearly along the path versus the older one that we were going to use. It has, we call a bug rating that is consistent with actions. It's a 1, 0, 1, which, let me just think exactly what that was, I had my note here to remind me. Oh, so 1 is backlight, so there's very little backlight, a 0 is for the uplight, so there's no uplight, it's essentially all focused down, and then a 1 for glare, so the glare is also very limited. When the modeling was done, it showed that there's a little spillover into the river, if any, down to the creek park. There's a little bit down the side of the levee slope, but really is the best light that we could find. Now, the, the heat temperature of the light, originally they had recommended 2,700, we've gone down from 4,000 to 3,000, so we're very close. Going below 3,000, we're concerned that the light or the color rendition isn't very good as you go further down in the heat lamp, air, uh, heat temperature. And, and that's important for security, for people to recognize what's in front of them, as well as for police in case, or emergency services, in the, in case they need to identify that might be in trouble, et cetera, that they get the colors correct. And so that's why we're going with the 3,000 versus the 2,700 or lower. So we've made all these changes to the project, they've been incorporated in the plans and the specifications, and our intention is to go out to bid as soon as the council approves the project. The project's 100% grant funded through the active transportation program, and the time we get advertised and awarded, we're looking at probably construction starting approximately November. And depending on the supply chain issues with getting streetlights, you know, that could happen pretty quickly, or it could be delayed depending on where we are with, with the contractor ordering the lights, but November through December potentially, maybe a little bit later.
Thank you so much for that overview and all of your work. This is really, you know, I think this is just a great example of, you know, how, you know, consulting with community folks and, and people who really spend a lot of time thinking about these matters can really improve a project. And so I just really appreciate all your work to bring this forward. And with that, I would go ahead and, and move that we approve the plans and specifications for the San Lorenzo Riverwalk lighting project as recommended by staff, and we have the language in our agenda packet. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead.
Mayor, this hasn't, this hasn't been polled, anyway, it's still part of consent, so you guys.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, this wasn't, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. This is a question, yeah. Second time on the consent agenda, I'm so sorry. I'm absolutely gonna support it, and thank you for, for everything you've done. Yeah, I caught that. Okay, we have one item pulled, we'll come back to that, but now I'm gonna take our consent items, so this will be items 13 through 24 on our agenda, with the exception of item number 23. And I'll go ahead and take this out to public comment. Okay, for those who would like to comment on our consent agenda items 13 through 24, with the exception of 23, now is the time for you to call in. Instructions will be on your screen. Please remember to mute your streaming device, press star nine to raise your hand, and listen for the cues saying that you have been unmuted. All items, excuse me, so we'll go ahead, I see phone number ending in 0030. Press star nine, you'll, star nine, you'll be unmuted. There you go.
Good afternoon, this is Rob Sonnenfeld. Thank you, Council, for your leadership. I'm speaking this afternoon regarding the consent agenda item number 18. This has to do with exploring the impacted parking situation in the Beach Flats neighborhood. And while I think it's important to, to explore solutions to this problem, I'm concerned that the language in this consent agenda item is prescriptive, in that it, it focuses on reducing costs specifically for, for the Nueva Vista residents who are living in a 48-unit affordable housing complex that has 48 off-street parking spots. Beach Flats overall has somewhere around 400 homes, and the majority of those homes do not have any off-street parking. And additionally, over 75% of the neighborhood is rent burdened, with the average, average household paying upwards of 70% of their income on rent. It's concerning if the approach to looking at the parking situation could be inequitably giving additional street parking to residents who already have access to off-street parking, to the detriment of the other residents in, in the neighborhood who don't have access to off-street parking. So I just encourage you all to review this item and to change the, the framework to trying to resolve the, the parking, the impacted parking impact, and not prescribing, reducing costs, because costs may be, lowering costs may actually be counterproductive in, in resolving the situation.
Thank you. Next I have caller with the phone number ending in 0581. Press star nine to unmute.
Star six.
Yeah, hello?
Sorry. Press star six to unmute, sorry about that. 0581, there you go, you're unmuted. Go ahead, please.
Hi, okay, I wanted to address the issue about the write-out, was that it, item number 23?
No, that item is not on our agenda today, so if you wanted to talk about that, you would have to come back at oral communications later on this afternoon, after item number 27 on our agenda.
About what time might that be, do you know?
Bonnie, did you have a comment?
No.
Yeah.
Uh, that will likely occur sometime around, uh, let me just look here, sometime around six, let's see here, sometime around five, 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 probably about five, 5:30 today.
Okay, great, I, I absolutely.
It'll be after item 31 on our agenda, I'm sorry, it's 31, and it is very likely it'll be around 5:00 or 5:15. Thank you. Next up is caller ending in 1810. Star six to unmute, please.
Yeah, this is Gary Phillips. As regards the meeting minutes, I believe you missed stated the point of my oral communication speech where I did not speak in opposition to Black Lives Matter. I spoke in opposition to this city's government, that's you, and its lack of judgment sanctioning of a block-long BLM billboard symbol in front of City Hall, as well as promoting the LGBT moral agenda near, with permanent rainbow flag displays on the Pride, I mean Civic Auditorium, because it signals approval for all those movements stand for in the people's name. You don't get to pick and choose what organizational symbols mean, you endorse their whole enchilada agenda of beliefs and behaviors when approving their display on public property. As was pointed out, you should not promote extreme Malcolm X-inspired Marxist anarchist mob violence with the goal of the destruction of the entire institution of criminal justice, or promoting the LGBT moral agenda, because again, this exceeds government purpose and scope. You see, there is a legality definition, like prostitution is illegal, that is within your authority, but outside those definable realities, such as what might, what some might judge as perhaps unrepentant, horrid promiscuity, are for the court of public opinion and an individual's internal moral compass to decide, not you, not you, in government to promote personal, extreme, controversial political agendas or morals at will, using public property as propaganda. For clarity as to what I said last meeting, you should have stuck to the origins of what happened to George Floyd and, and started all that violence. You did that with some police reform, but then you went straight back to authority abuse with the unconstitutional discriminatory report ordinance and the BLM billboard. One important lesson of George Floyd was he was not a victim of systemic racism, because that never came up in the Chauvin trial, because it didn't exist, so it is that George Floyd's death had nothing to do with his race. The bigger lesson is that even a kind of low-life drug addict like George Floyd, and we got plenty of those here, has a life as precious as anyone's, and the government had best respect the lives of all its citizens. Not abusing authority, then, is the big lesson that is the government's to learn. Thanks.
You know, I'm not seeing any other hands raised in concerning the consent agenda, so I'm now looking for a motion on items number 13 through 24, exception of item 23. Councilmember Brown?
I'll, now that the time has come, I will move the consent agenda with the exception of item 23.
Thank you, and Councilmember Watkins?
I'll second that.
Okay. Great. Okay. So we have, by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Watkins, to approve the consent agenda items number 13 through 24, with the exception of 23. I'd like to ask the clerk to please call a roll vote.
Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Oh, well, she stepped out. Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. We'll now go back to item number 23, which for the public is the item cost of construction fee revision, this is from our public works department, and I'll have Chris Schneider. This was pulled by Councilmember Cummings and Vice Mayor Brunner.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions come in from members of the public. So one of the, the first question is, they were wondering how the city can allocate more funding to the active transportation as part of the fee, and I think it's, it sounds like by ordinance, 15% of this fee actually goes towards active transportation, and so they were just wanting to get some clarity on that. And I got these, like, this morning, so, sorry I wasn't able to ask these questions and bringing this forward to see if we can find some answers for these members of the public.
I'm sure. Chris Schneider, Assistant Director of Public Works. So the traffic impact fee program, when it was established 10 years or more ago, included a percentage on top of traffic impact fee for alternative transportation, that was 15%. And then, but also every project that's in the traffic impact fee program also includes pedestrian and bicycle improvement, so at an intersection or green lanes, et cetera, those are often included in the project. So the reality is, the program contributes to each project, or contributes about 40% of its active transportation. The, the traffic impact fee program is based on measuring impacts, and the impacts are related to motor vehicles, not to bikes and pedestrians. And so therefore, that fee that we've, the 15% we've added on to the program is an add-on. So if you want to add an additional percentage or increase, you'd have to add that on top of what's being proposed already. And, you know, in the past, we've had some discussion about, you know, how that would be acceptable to the development community as they pay these fees, that they're, you know, paying above and beyond what the impacts are to their development. At the time, the 15% was deemed, you know, acceptable as part of the community project that was done years ago to approve the traffic impact fee program. I'm not sure what, how that would go now, but it's more of a policy decision than what's before you now. What we're talking about right now is really more administrative changes, an increase in the traffic impact fee due to the cost of construction having increased 15% the last 10 years, and more, even more recently, we haven't raised the rate since 2012. And incorporating the downtown amendments that were approved in 2017 into the program, so it's more equitable how those fees or traffic impacts are paid for overall development. And then also changing our transportation study guidelines to requirements, and that's related to making them more consistent across all development. So again, that's, you know, that adding on is more really a policy decision than the decision of whether it's gonna, you know, need to go back for further discussion or not.
Great, thanks for that clarification. And then the other question, in the resolution, one of the wherethes mentions that SEQA guidelines that were revised on June 9, 2020, to comply with Senate Bill 743, to use vehicle miles traveled as a measure of significance in analyzing transportation impact. Has that been the model that we've been using, or have we started transitioning to that model in terms of calculating traffic impacts? And if we are moving in that direction, I guess, you know, have we gotten there yet, or are we still kind of trying to work through that, those calculations?
So, that legislation made vehicle miles traveled the SEQA analysis for whether there are traffic impacts or not. The City of Santa Cruz is a built-out community, and we're, because we have Green Builds that control, that we're doing really internal development versus external, very few projects will show. internal development versus external, very few projects will show up with a VMT impact, if any. And so far, we've been applying the VMT standard, and we haven't seen any impacts, or the modeling for the VMT doesn't reflect any impacts. In discussing using VMT impacts for traffic, for developing fee, you know, the fees based on impacts, essentially would decimate the Traffic Impact Fee Program. That legislation still allows using level of service just for fees, for transportation impact fees, and that's why we still have that program, and that's why most communities still have it that way. In discussing a VMT-based fee with consultants, there are some communities that are making an effort to go there, but it's unclear how successful they are, and whether it really is solving the problems they've set out to do. So I think in the future, there'll be more information on that, but right now, it's not really something that we can use in the program.
Great, thanks, Chris.
Vice Mayor Brunner, did you have questions on this item?
My question was related, since this item, we received correspondence from a member of the public and regarding this item going to the Transportation Commission for recommendation, and I just wanted to ask about that process. And since it's seeking a fee, a change to the fees.
Sure, and this again is more just administrative changes to the program, consistent with what we've done before. For, if there is a policy change, then we take it back to the commission for review before we come to the council. But at this point, it's just looking at the fee and increasing the fee as a result of these two things, adding the downtown amendment projects and a cost of construction increase.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I would look for a motion then for item number twenty-three on the consent agenda, which is the Cost of Construction Fee Revision.
Mayor, you need public comment?
That's right, thank you. I will take out item number twenty-three from our consent agenda for public comment. Is there anyone in the, in attendees today that would like to comment on item twenty-three of our consent agenda? Please press star now, star nine to raise your hand, and then listen for the cue saying you've been unmuted. I do see caller ending in number, last four-digit, zero-zero-three-zero. So this will be just for item twenty-three, which is the Cost of Construction Fee Revision item. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, this is Ramazan Ansel again. Thanks so much for pulling this item. I just wanted to emphasize that, that, you know, it is concerning that our, our fee is based on level of service and, and, you know, while, you know, forty percent of the funding for that could be going towards transportation, that's not a requirement, and I would hope that this council, if you're going to approve the fee increase, that you really, in the future, or maybe even in the motion today, look at, at tying that to investments in alternative modes of transportation besides driving. As we all know, you know, as we make improvements to streets like adding lanes, we induce demand for vehicles, and we basically eventually really never get anywhere. So we are potentially spending money on, on making fixes to improve our transportation that are very short-term, that are not going to actually result in improved level of service over the long term.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public that would like to speak to item number twenty-three on the consent agenda? I see Kyle Kelly, go ahead, please.
Hey, thank you so much, council, for presenting on this item. I, I do want to see us take, take a glance of what's going to be the right way to handle this for our climate action plan. If we continue to do level of service, we are continuing with car-based infrastructure and pricing car-based infrastructure, and at some point, how to switch it, and it is in the general plan right now for why it's level of service, not VMT. This will probably sound strange to some of you, since I come and speak in favor of doing housing, but I would actually like to see the fee raised so that we could put more money into active transportation, because we're capped, I see it on the commission, you know, for, for how much we have allocated for our action. I want to get us out of, out of cars as soon as possible. Maybe there's nothing to do today, but I at least, I'm glad that we've opened this conversation up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will bring it back to council for a motion. Councilmember Watkins? Happy to move item number three. Okay, and Councilmember Brown?
So I will second that, but I wanted to, excuse me, ask a question about the, the possibility of sending this to the Transportation and Public Works Commission. You know, I, I support the increase, I think it makes sense to try to better reflect the actual costs there, and I don't want to delay that. But I also agree that the Transportation and Public Works Commission does play a major role, or they're, they're established to play a role in these kinds of conversations. And so I'm just wondering if the main motion would be willing to include that without approval, that we would send the, the issue of traffic impact fees for review, and any additional recommendations to the Transportation and Public Works Commission for discussion and possible recommendation to the, to the council in the future.
I'm, before, I'm interested in having this go, just wondering in terms of the action before us today, in regards to having that go back to that commission, and then back, what, Chris, or do you want to speak to that, or in terms of the process?
Sure, you know, we have had discussions with individual members of the commission on the Traffic Impact Fee Program. We do know that they're interested in increasing the percentage for alternative transportation. You know, it'd have to be in context with all the other increases in alternative transportation. I mean, if you look at our capital improvement program and all the transportation grants we've been receiving, they're all for active transportation. You know, we just received almost a ten minute, and for segment seven, phase two, the rail trail, the active transportation, you know, is paying for the lighting on the levee, and there's a number of other projects like that. And we continue to also use other funding, Measure D has been applied to a number of projects. SB one, which is a gas tax increase, that's been paying for some of the enhanced bike striping and access rent for the paving projects, et cetera. So, you know, if we can bring the whole thing back, the whole funding scope of how things, how active transportation is paid for, I think they'll see that there's a lot more out there than has been in past years, and taking, risking this program in order to try to get more may not be advantageous for the city, and maybe isn't as critical as people think right now. So anyway, I think it's important to prove the action now, the commission will have another opportunity to put this on their agenda in the future.
Okay. I'm more comfortable with the motion, and then, I don't know, Councilmember Brown, that's sort of the second part of your friendly amendment, if you will, to have these forthcoming discussions for the commission, if that feels okay for you.
That, that was actually what I, I was, sorry if that wasn't clear, I'm having an issue with clarity today for some reason, that, that we would approve this today, and then refer the, the overall issue that it appears that at least some members of the Transportation and Public Works Commission are interested in having a conversation at the commission level. So the, the addition is really to suggest that, in addition to adopting the resolution, you know, as stated here in the staff recommendation to refer, to ask the Public Works Commission to review traffic impact fees and other in the context of alternative transportation funding, and make recommendations as they see fit. So this is, this is in addition to what we're, the staff recommendation today. The reason that I'm, I'm suggesting this is because, you know, I, I think I heard you say, Chris, that there will be other opportunities for the Transportation and Public Works Commission to, to look at this, and I just want to make sure that happens. And I know that they don't necessarily have the ability to set their agenda in the same way that the council does. So I'm just wanting to make sure that there's space for that, that the council would, or to see if, if council members would support the Transportation and Public Works Commission having an agenda item like that, and possibly making additional recommendations to us for the future. So that was my intention.
I'm just going to ask Tony, Tony, is this, is this a little outside the realm of the item as it's agendized?
I feel like, first of all, I feel like the second part of the motion needs, needs to be clarified, because it was kind of a it was conversation than a motion. I saw what was on the screen as, you know, as a motion, and I, I think that the council could direct that an item be sent to the Transportation and Public Works Commission for further analysis, but I just think it needs to be clear what specific direction that is.
What I heard from you, Chris, and what I think I'm hearing from you also, Councilmember Brown, is that you can go ahead and move forward with the action before us today, but in the future, within a broader context of other sort of alternatives to transportation, that we could have the commission that, sort of the holistic approach, and, and kind of weigh in at that, at that level. But I, but I, I don't want to direct something that doesn't feel clear or, or necessary or appropriate as, as related to this item also.
Yeah, and there has been some discussion when we take the capital improvement program to the, the commissions every year, not only for their recommendations prior to council adoption of the budget, but also when we do updates to the commission. So there's been some opportunity for that, and at some time, depending on staff resources. I can't commit to it, because I'm going to be gone pretty soon, but somebody will be working on this program, and they will, can, you know, have, there's always that potential to have it scheduled for the commission as an individual item. It's definitely doable.
Maybe, maybe given the, kind of overall sentiment of the council, and kind of seeing this move forward in some way as appropriate, I don't know if it necessarily needs to be part of the motion, but just in general, kind of wanting to see that engagement. I wonder if that works for the council at this time?
And I'll say that staff has heard you.
Okay, great.
Great, that's great, thanks.
Okay, we will, so the motion stands to approve Agenda Item twenty-three, which is Cost of Construction Fee Revision. There's a motion by Councilmember Watkins, seconded by Councilmember Brown, and I'd like to go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Goldar is absent. Cummings?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, next up, next up is our consent public hearing. These are items twenty-five and twenty-six on our agenda. For the public who are streaming this meeting, if you want to comment on items twenty-five or twenty-six, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. All items will be acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled by a council member for further discussion. This is item number twenty-five and twenty-six, and for the public, number twenty-five is the second reading and final adoption of Ordinance Number twenty-one, twenty-dash-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one-dash-fifteen Municipal Code Amendments relating to eighty U-units responding to modifications requested by the Coastal Commission. And item number twenty-six is the second reading and final adoption of Ordinance Number twenty-sixteen, amending chapter thirteen, point oh-four, point zero-one-one of the Santa Cruz Municipal Code related to London Nelson Community Center. Are there any council members who wish to pull an item from the consent public hearing item, or consent public hearing today? I am not seeing any. Go ahead and take this out to the public for comments. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak to any consent public hearing item, now is the time to do so. Please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set to two minutes. Are there any members of the public who would like? I'm not seeing any hands, so I will bring it back to the council for a motion. Councilmember Cummings?
I'll move the consent public hearing items twenty-five and twenty-six.
And Councilmember Watkins? I'll second that. We have a motion to approve our consent public hearing items number twenty-five and twenty-six. Motion by Councilmember Cummings, seconded by Councilmember Watkins. I'd like to ask for the clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldar is still gone, Vice Mayor Brunner had to step away, Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-seven on our agenda today has been continued to a special meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August thirty-first, 2021, at four-thirty PM. That item will not be discussed today. I'm going to adjourn for about ten minutes, and we will reconvene at three-fifteen, just to give council members a brief break to get up and stretch. So for those members in the public, we will be coming back on item number twenty-eight, which is introduced for publication and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point four-zero of the Municipal Code related to Parks and Recreation Departments of the adopted park program. So we'll be back at three-fifteen to go ahead and do that item. Thanks, everybody. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started for the public. We are now on item number twenty-eight on our agenda, and that is to introduce for publication and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point four-zero of the Municipal Code related to the Parks and Recreation Department's adopted park program. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from council. We will then take public comment, and then return to the council for deliberation and action. So I'll go ahead and call up Tony Elliott, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and this is for item number twenty, introduced for publication and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point four-zero of the Santa Cruz Municipal Code related to park adoption. 13.40 of the Santa Cruz Municipal Code related to park adoption.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Tony Elliott, Parks and Recreation Director, and I will share my screen for a short presentation here. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Thank you. Well, it's nice to talk about this today on a day that we were able to recognize council members for your volunteerism out at Main Beach. So, just quickly, thank you again for everybody's participation. On this topic of volunteerism, we have a proposal for the City Council today, which is a request to consider proposed amendments to the Santa Cruz Municipal Code, Chapter 13.40, regarding the Parks and Rec Department's Adopt a Park Program. So, the, I'll just move through this pretty quickly here, but just a little bit of background to start. So, the Adopt a Park Program was developed in 2017 to create a pro, allow community groups, schools, organizations, and individuals to partner with the Parks and Recreation Department on the installation or maintenance of parks, park amenities, landscaping, and facilities at city parks, or areas of responsibility by the Parks and Recreation Department. Currently, the department has eight park adoption agreements, or eight park adopters, and we have an additional three that are pending. And these groups work on activities ranging from pulling weeds to laying down mulch, to maintaining trails and planting native plants, so just to name a couple examples. And Adopt a Park activities take place throughout the city park system at a range of spaces, and just to name a few, the San Lorenzo River levee, the Riverwalk area, Grant Park, De La Viega Trails, Pilkington Creek over on the east side, and many, many others. So, I just want to cover quickly what the program does, what the Adopt a Park Program does, and what it does not do. And so, this won't be fully comprehensive, but just a bit of a snapshot in terms of what the program does. So, in the context of the Adopt a Park Program, all work done by peers must be in line with work that the department would do, and that work is in accordance with master plans, with various plans and procedures, policies, not the least of which are different site-specific resource management plans, park-specific management plans, for example. So, all work has to be really what department staff would do, and no more. Adds capacity to the Parks and Recreation Department and allows a meaningful way for residents to get involved in Parks and Rec. All of our Adopt a Park agreements begin with a work plan. So, before any group gets started, we develop a work plan so that staff and volunteers can develop clear goals and ensure that volunteers have the capacity and the skills and the commitment needed to become a park adopter. Quickly, I just want to cover what the program doesn't do, and this was kind of a topic of discussion at our Parks and Rec Commission meeting on this topic. The program does not give any unique authority to volunteer groups, and it does not provide any sort of autonomy to groups just to take action as they see fit. So, I think that, again, that's important. The work that is done has to be based on an agreed-upon work plan and is not, anybody any specific benefits in terms of doing what work they want to do specifically. The program is structured so that all park adopters enter into an agreement with Parks and Rec based on the work plan that I mentioned, and again, in accordance with master plan, different master plans and management plans. And finally, the program does not grant exclusivity, so multiple groups can volunteer along the Riverwalk, for example. So, this would not give rights to one group just simply to take over or adopt the entire river, for example. You could have multiple groups. Proposed amendments before the City Council today include removing language related to donations and/or sponsorships as a qualifier for park adoptions. Both the department and the city have separate donations and sponsorship policies for these purposes. In the council's packet, I shared some examples of really robust sponsorship programs that we are looking to develop something similar. So, rather than have complete sponsorship or donation language in the Adopt a Park code, we want to really separate that, and that'll be something that we bring back in the future in terms of potential sponsorship policy. The other proposed amendment is related to the approval of our Adopt a Park agreement. So, the current language is not necessarily clear, but has been interpreted to give the commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the review and approve park adoption agreements. So, the proposal before council is to amend the language to clarify that approval authority reside with the department. And the purpose of this is to ensure that the Adopt a Park Program is effectively administered, but also efficient in our process. So, when volunteers are interested, we want to engage them in an efficient way to keep them interested and get them engaged. We do see a lot of instances of what we often refer to as vigilante volunteerism throughout the park system. And so, in our efforts to make the Adopt a Park Program, our effort really is to make the Adopt a Park Program very approachable and very streamlined for prospective volunteers, and therefore hoping to avoid some of that sort of rogue volunteerism that we often see, which a lot of times is not in line with master plans or management plans throughout the city. So, staff will recommend that the ordinance language be amended so that Adopt a Park agreements may be approved administratively within the department. The Parks and Rec Commission voted four to three to support these changes. The primary concerns among the commission members who voted against the changes included fears about the autonomy of some of the groups and the lack of, potential lack of oversight. They worried about a lack of expertise among volunteers and the need for clear criteria upon which volunteers are evaluated in order to become and remain park. So, in response to a lot of these concerns, staff updated the associated administrative procedure order, the APO, which is included with your packet, to include a few things. We included a lot more detailed criteria for park adoption agreements. We also amended the initial term of all Adopt a Park agreements to six months, so that we could effectively evaluate the work product after six months, rather than giving groups a full year to start. So, if they're approved after that six months, we could extend that from one year or more. Additionally, staff created a, an appeals process in the ordinance language so that volunteers who are denied, or who may be denied being a park adopter by the department, they can appeal to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, we wanted to hear these concerns from the commission, again, clarify that, again, this does not grant groups exclusivity or any unique authority or autonomy. So, we wanted to clarify that. And again, we modified the associated APO that goes with this ordinance, those criteria, both for approvals, but criteria upon which we could use to potentially deny applications. And the commission could use those same criteria to evaluate any denials that come before them in the form of an appeal. So, finally, as currently established by the APO, staff will continue to provide an annual report to the Parks and Recreation Commission on the Adopt a Park Program. And so, today, staff recommends that the City Council hold the first reading on the amended changes, but we're happy to answer any questions that you may have in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, for that report. I will go ahead and open this up for questions from City Council at this time. Sorry, I'm managing my barking dog here real quick here. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Tony, for the report and for working on this, this process here, and the procedures have been interesting to navigate, and having been involved in one of these situations where there's a little bit of rogue activity happening, and we're trying to actually make that more collaborative with the city and, you know, really, really track with the specific goals for that riparian area. I'm really glad to see this happening. I know that the commissioners did have some concerns, and so I've, I've heard from a couple of folks about this, and I just wanted to ask the question so we can maybe hear from you about how you are anticipating, recognizing that there's an appeals process for folks who want to adopt a park and may not get approved, how, and that nobody has, you know, sole ownership over sites, how you see kind of navigating any potential differences, community differences, with, you know, there's, there's obviously even within the parameters that we have some interpretation, and, you know, so there's gray areas, and there may be conflicts, and I'm just wondering how you're thinking about approaching that. Would those also be directed to the commission? Or, like, if it gets trickier, would it go to the commission? Or what are you thinking about how to, how to approach it, should it arise?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And I think it really starts, to the best of our ability, in sort of an upstream way. So, when we enter into our work plans with volunteer groups, we want to make sure it's really clear from the front end. And so, I think any sort of discrepancy, you know, whether it's in a certain area, should we plant only natives, should we plant, you know, variety of other plants, house contained, we do see those disagreements or different interpretations pretty frequently. But what we can do, again, on the front end of any of these is make sure that in those work plans, how we are guiding any adopters is consistent, so that the expectation is really the same from the front end. Now, if that work plan, again, if a group deviates from that work plan, then we're going to have to have conversations with that group because we've got to stay in alignment with that. And that would reflect different resource management plans and so forth. But, yeah, certainly, you know, where we have parks or properties that are a little more open to interpretation on how they should be maintained, again, I think it would really start with the work plan internally, and again, evaluating a group's capacity, but just setting those expectations upfront. And I think if we did have conflicts that arise for some reason, I think we would first try to address that internally as part of our process, but we absolutely would engage the commission in that process, most likely through the context of our annual report, to say, we found a problem, or we found some issue that's coming up, and so maybe we need, we need to modify our APO or make adjustments from there. So, that's reporting back to them so they can have that oversight of how is this working, what are the outcomes, and, you know, and what's our engagement? Are we, are we involving more groups as well?
Great. Thank you. I just have one, one quick follow-up to that. I really appreciate it, just to, and I don't want to volunteer her, but you do have one commissioner who is particularly skilled and knowledgeable around, you know, native vegetation, and Jane Mio, who many of you know, through her own work, and so, and she was really helpful to me and, you know, to our group in, you know, doing a bit of a review of what we were looking at and what existed. So, I don't want to volunteer her, but I would say that she's an amazing resource, and if there's a way to, you know, as people kind of trying to make these proposals, if it seems appropriate to, you know, get them access to that expertise, and so I'm just, you know, I don't know that that would be a formal thing, but just, just really wanting to recognize her, the role that she played, a critical role that she's played, and the really helpful role for, you know, at least in my experience, and certainly on the, on the river, the San Lorenzo River. So, if there's a way to kind of use that resource too, and you're, it might help you as well with your, you know, I know you're understaffed and always a burden, so, anyway, just, just a thought. And I know that it's, it's a work in progress and absolutely want to support as you move forward.
Yeah, just to briefly follow up on that, you had Jane, who's our Parks and Recreation Commission Chair, and also a volunteer lead for many different groups. I'm not sure how she does it all, but she is an incredible resource and somebody that we look to a lot. In fact, if I just quickly may offer a shameless plug for Jane, Jane is working down at the Benchlands right now, not today specifically, but working with a group down there on stewardship along the river in the Benchlands, so working with individuals living down on the Benchlands right now. And so, that's kind of an extension of the Downtown Streets Team Stewardship Program. But we are absolutely, you know, squeezing everything out of Jane as we can because she's a great, a great leader, and we appreciate her skills, and she's proven to be a great leader. And she, she has at least one outstanding park adoption proposal or agreement with us that she's eager to get moving forward. So, we're hopeful that with these amendments that we can get her on board and doing some pretty great stuff.
Thanks.
Is there any other questions from council members at this point? Okay, I'll go ahead and take it out to public comment then. If you're interested in commenting on Item Number 28 on today's agenda, that's an ordinance amending the municipal code related to the Parks and Recreation Department's Adopt a Park Program, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand at this time. When it is your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set to two minutes. I'm looking at our attendees, and I'm not seeing anyone here. So, I'll go ahead and bring this back to council for either further questions or would look to a motion at this time. Councilmember Calentari Johnson and Councilmember Watkins?
Thank you, Tony and team, for bringing this. I would like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Do I need to read?
No, we're good on that. And Councilmember Watkins? I'll go ahead and second that motion. Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Calentari Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Watkins, to introduce for publication and ordinance amending Chapter 13.40 of the municipal code related to the Parks and Recreation Department's Adopt a Park Program. Bonnie, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Tony. Great program. Okay, next up, we have Item Number 29 on our agenda, which is the Permanent Outdoor Seating Program Update and Direction. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from the council. We will then take public comment and then return to the council for deliberation and action. I'll go ahead and turn this over to Rebecca Unit, our Economic Development Manager. Welcome, Rebecca.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us. And I will turn over to Bonnie to give a brief introduction of this item for us.
Thanks, Rebecca, and good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. I just wanted to introduce the item and acknowledge that we have received a fair number of communications from members of the public, impacted businesses. And in reading through the recommendation, we realized that particularly for what, as it relates to private spaces, we are recommending that we extend a temporary period for outdoor seating in private spaces as well for the same time period to the end of December 2022. The nuance that we were trying to communicate and will clarify in the presentation is that additionally, we want to provide some outreach to those spaces, in private spaces, to clarify and look closely at any sort of code requirements for those spaces that are a little different in private spaces than when we're looking specifically at parking, that are in the public spaces. And so, one of the challenges that we've had in looking at the outdoor seating program is that we have our more managing of these permits on an emergency temporary basis. And so, in looking at a capacity standpoint of how to move forward, we've been trying to categorize to the extent possible those that fit certain, certain criteria. And so, by focusing on the public areas, specifically the public spaces, those have set criteria. And so by focusing on the public areas, specifically the public spaces, those have set criteria. And so we're able to sort of look at those as a group. When we look at the private spaces, those have different set of criteria that's in the existing code. And so what we want to be able to do in the coming months is one-on-one, sit down with those businesses and be able to give them feedback on those spaces and help them sort of facilitate the process for them if they're interested during this extended year, basically ordinance period, to provide some assistance for them to go through the administrative use process. So I just wanted to clarify that because I think we unintentionally in the staff report did lack some clarity in that area. And when Rebecca follows up with the presentation, you'll see the change that we're proposing in the recommendation as it relates to that for private spaces. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca.
All right, thank you very much. So today we are presenting an update on our permanent outdoor dining program progress as well as a request for direction from the city council. So our sort of agenda for this presentation is a snapshot of the current temporary outdoor dining program, going over some of the outreach and feedback that we have received. And then covering sort of the two paths to permanence specifically for parklets on public property and then also the outdoor dining that we have on private property. And then our staff recommendation for your consideration. Giving you a brief overview of sort of the timeline of outdoor dining in the city of Santa Cruz. We, in 1991, the city actually created the sidewalk dining that you see downtown on Pacific Avenue as part of the downtown recovery plan following the earthquake. That was very successful and in as parklets became a thing with San Francisco sort of leading the charge in that and a lot of our downtown businesses wanting to be able to take advantage of those expansions into on-street parking. We created a pilot parklet program and we had two businesses that took advantage of that. That's Hula's and LuPlo Downtown. In 2017, the city did formalize that program as part of some of the downtown plan updates. But we didn't really take a lot of the steps that we needed to do and making that really feasible for businesses to take advantage of. So we still now in 2021 only have those two businesses operating permanent parklets. And then we came to March 2020 with the pandemic and coronavirus shelter-in-place orders. And we saw a significant interruption to business activity. And in June 2020, the city council responded to the impacts to businesses and created our temporary outdoor expansion program through the city manager's executive orders. And that allowed for outdoor dining and retail displays on sidewalks, alleys, street closures and private property. In December of 2020, we extended this current executive order to October 21, 2021. And that was, it also was very beneficial when the state enacted the regional state home order, which shut down businesses again after we hadn't had some reopening happening. In June 2021, just a few months ago, the council again extended our emergency ordinance through the end of this year, December 31, 2021. And now in August, just a couple of months later, and things have changed again with the Delta variant increases and concerns to those impacts to businesses and with the mask mandate now in effect as well. So it's sort of a timeline of where we're at and how this program has evolved and some of the circumstances we've been dealing with. And so I just want to dig a little bit deeper into some of those pre-pandemic outdoor dining programs just to set the context for sort of how we've been operating currently and where this comes into play in the future plans for permanent. So pre-pandemic, we have been operating an outdoor extension area program is what it's called in the code. And this is our permanent sidewalk dining. This is allowed citywide, however, a majority of these sidewalk dining licenses and permits are in our downtown. We have 21 of these licenses. Those are all of the sidewalk dining that you see on Pacific Avenue. And then we also have some of these in the Beach Street area. And then as I mentioned, we have our outdoor curb extension areas, which are more commonly referred to as parklets. This was created as a pilot program and there's some policy and sort of fee restructuring that we need to do to make this really an accessible program. And then we've also had private property outdoor. And this is done really through the planning and building and safety reviews. And this is, you know, private property, it's allowed citywide as long as businesses meet what's required in the code and the findings for those permits. And so now for our current pandemic outdoor dining program, we have the temporary outdoor expansion. This allows free temporary permits. This is a very, very quick and dirty sort of permit process for businesses to give them that real emergency response fee that they experienced through the pandemic. As part of this, we're allowing the, you know, use of public sidewalks, alleyways, parklets, private property dining areas. We've also have the two-street closures and then we have, we've also allowed retail service and fitness uses on public and private property to address some of those business closures that impact, that were impacted from the pandemic. And then as Bonnie mentioned, we have 96 current permit holders as part of the temporary program. Sort of breaks down to 37 parklets. 34 of these permits are on private property. 13 are on the sidewalk or alleyways and 12 of those are sort of fitness or retail related. We actually saw a lot of our gyms take advantage of this in response to some of those indoor closures, which is really nice to see. And then just to give you a sort of geographic spread of where we're seeing these permits taking place, a lot of the concentration has really been in the downtown and the significant parklet expansion in the downtown. But we've also seen a lot of private property uses on the east side and the west side of Santa Cruz. And seeing a lot of our restaurants and wineries and breweries being able to expand into their property spaces. And then also just to note, we have 96 permits and we have had five business closures. Well, you know, any business closure is extremely devastating, but I think it also speaks to just the power and impact of this program being able to be a lifeline for businesses and helping them to, you know, keep moving forward through all the setbacks. As I mentioned, we have our Kathkar Street closure in front of Hula's and LuPlo and Spoksmann. And this has been a really well-received space and given them a lot of greatly needed extra dining area. And then our full block closure on the 1100 block. And this is just a new photo for you of some of the expanded platforms and parklets that a lot of the businesses have put together there as they're really taking ownership of that space and doing some fun things. So I'll just give you a snapshot of the feedback that we've received as we've been planning for permanent outdoor dining. We've been working a lot internally as well as with the business community as well as some of our partners in different jurisdictions around the Bay Area. We've attended a lot of the downtown associations, recovery subcommittee meetings to get feedback from you guys. And then had some one-on-one conversations with businesses. So first and foremost, I think we feel that both internally and externally, time is of the essence and capacity is extremely limited. So we know that our businesses are struggling to hire and retain their staff. We know just with everything, the emergency response that we're doing internally at the city that, you know, capacity is limited there. And also just being able to, a business, and then make these decisions that they need to make to be able to make investments or follow along with the city processes. We want to be really respectful and mindful of everything that they have on their plate. And then the supply chain impacts, we're really seeing this have an effect on all layers of permanent outdoor dining in our communication with some of our colleagues over the hill and other jurisdictions, you know, that are maybe a little bit further along in this process. We're seeing impacts on sourcing materials such as planters and, you know, lumber and all the different elements that you need to make the outdoor dining actually happen. And then we also experience this in terms of the design professionals and contractors and, you know, all the construction pieces of bringing this together as well. All of those professionals are really busy and have long wait lists to do the work. So that's challenging on both sides of developing the plans and also getting them built and completed. And then as we're experiencing now, the COVID-19 continues to be really uncertain and just seeing the increase in the Delta variant and those impacts to businesses, something that we're continuing to navigate. And it's almost been, well, it's been over a year of this program. And so it just changes every month what the different dynamics are at play. So with all that in mind and just what we've been doing internally and reviewing sort of the current temporary parklets that we have out, been working towards some goals for the permanent parklet program. So this is those on-streets dining areas and public parking spaces. And really our major goals are creating consistency of design, improving safety and maintenance standards. So right now with the very temporary nature of our program, businesses have sort of adapted how best they can and with the limited funds that they have. So there's a lot of differences in the types of platforms being used or, or businesses might not even have any sort of wooden platform in the streets. And then differences in terms of like the furniture and shade covering and lighting and different things like that. So looking at all those, trying to find consistency and some real safety and maintenance standards to address some impacts we're experiencing. And then also policy-related, expanding the areas where parklets are allowed beyond just the side streets in downtown. So currently, the way that the sort of pilot parklet program was created, any parklets on Pacific Avenue. And we have heard from a lot of those businesses that they do want to keep those. And then where we might have heard some complaints from retailers or other businesses next door where they don't want to lose that parking, we're seeing a lot more collaboration and seeing people really embrace sort of the impact that having these parklets on Pacific Avenue. Looking at sort of increasing the geography that we allow parklets as well as in other parts of the cities of beyond downtown, looking at the Beach Street area or the east side and west side where it's appropriate. And then a major piece for the parklets, something that we were working to address pre-pandemic and got significantly delayed because of it was revising the ongoing fee structure and creating an easier process for approval for these parklets. So the initial fee structure that we had for the parklets was somewhat redundant. And so looking at ways to sort of streamline that and ease it and make it a little bit more affordable for businesses going forward. So with all that being said, we have a pretty big to-do list on sort of bringing this forward. But the approach that we are needing to take for programs is revising and finalizing the parklet design guidelines. So, you know, that's talking about how many parking spaces can businesses use? What types of materials are allowed for the platforms and lighting and those things? We've learned a lot through the temporary, just seeing the creativity of the businesses and, and then also from what some of our other cities are doing in the Bay Area. And so being a little bit more flexible and making those guidelines a little bit easier and more beneficial to businesses. Providing the fee structure because we want to expand the geography and make those changes to the design guidelines. That is going to require some changes to the municipal code in the downtown plan. So working with planning on that. And then also when we're looking at extending beyond the downtown, we really need to conduct a review with Public Works to look at sort of the streets where it makes sense and where it's appropriately safe for parklets to be allowed. Really taking into consideration sort of the effective speeds. So we currently allow them on streets 25 miles per hour or less, but we know that, which is most of our streets in the city. But we know that a lot of traffic is traveling higher than those speeds. So where it doesn't make sense to most safely cite these parklets. And then finally, conducting a review of all the existing temporary parklets that we have with the temporary permits and looking at ways to sort of make modifications and bring them into the transition to the permanent process while this temporary program is in place before the expiration to help them transition into that. So now on the private property side of things, this is all of the outdoor dining that is maybe in a private parking lot for a restaurant or a bar or brewery, winery, those different things as anything that's not in the public. We actually, the city code currently allows for outdoor seating on private property. That's done through the administrative use permit process for the use approval. And I should also mention that the construction of any outdoor dining would have to go through the building permit process as well. Public, private property, excuse me, is really dictated by the requirements in the zoning code and the building code for safety and construction of those spaces. That permit process takes a look at parking reductions, parking, parking requirements and any reductions that can be made. It looks at noise, hours of operation, circulation within the private property space. And then often it provides conditions of approval for operation of those outdoor seating areas to mitigate any potential negative impacts. Because we already have this process in place and the planning department is, you know, has this readily available and is able to work with these businesses, we're proposing that with the path to permanence for private property operators is to work with them one-on-one, take a look at their current setup, review it with the planning department to, you know, determine how it aligns with the current code requirements and any, any required changes have to come about based on sort of what the code says. We also, while we're doing this, you know, this is a time for us to really say like, okay, how does the current code match up with what these businesses are doing temporarily? And are there maybe some improvements that could be made? So keeping track of that and really getting that hard data of like, here's how many parking spaces these businesses are using and here's what the code allows. And keeping a track and collecting that data to see if there's potential policy impacts or recommendations that we could make from what we're seeing. And then really providing that support to businesses as they apply it through the AEP process, making sure that they're understanding what the process is and guiding them through that. And so with those two major tracks in terms of public parklets, property work that we need to do, this is sort of our proposed timeline and next steps. So as part of our recommendation, we are requesting to extend the emergency ordinance for another year to give businesses the time, to give us the time to fully develop those parklet guidelines and make the code changes. And then also allow the businesses time to get through the permanent process. So we're proposing to revise the emergency ordinance and bring that back to the council on the September 28th meeting. And then we would be working with the businesses to review the existing temporary parklets for any modifications between September and November. And then hoping to finalize the parklet design guidelines by November. And we need to coordinate with planning to discuss the timeline for changing municipal code revisions and then begin permitting for transition to the permit program in 2022. And then on the private property side, revising the emergency ordinance, doing that review of those existing private property expansions in the same timeframe as the parklets, September to November. And then the goal of beginning to transition those permanent in November 2021 because we already have that in place. So just working with those businesses as quickly as we can to get them the permanent fee that they're seeking. Councilmember Cummings, did you have a question on this?
No, I'll wait till you're done.
Okay, good, thank you. So that brings us to our recommendations. I know these are pretty extensive recommendations here. But our first one is to direct staff to bring back on September 28th a revised temporary outdoor expansion program, emergency ordinance that extends the temporary period for outdoor seating in public spaces, which is currently set to expire at the end of this December and bringing that through to December 31st, 2022. And then additionally, extending the temporary period for outdoor seating in the private spaces through to December 31st, 2022. And we also added on here, and provide assistance to those businesses meeting certain criteria in the municipal code to be eligible for permanent approval. So that's that one-on-one coordination and support in moving those private property permit holders into the permanent process. Our second recommendation is to work with businesses operating these spaces to make any necessary changes needed to address maintenance issues and help aid transition to the permanent program prior to expiration of the emergency ordinance. And our final recommendation, or actually I shouldn't say that. Yeah, that's another suggestion there. Excuse me, direct staff to start working on the necessary revisions to the municipal code for future council consideration. Start to expand outdoor seating and public on-street parking, parklets citywide, including finalizing the revisions to the parklet design guidelines, including approved platform designs, materials, safety features, accessibility requirements and lighting and shade materials, as well as revising the fee structure for parklets and evaluating the potential to waive. and evaluating the potential to waive, modify, or offset fees for one to two years to facilitate pandemic business. And then we added a fourth one for you here for consideration. We wanted to address some of the street closures, because we didn't go into too much detail on that in our staff report, but it's something that we have been discussing with the business owner. So the 1100 block full closure, we have had a lot of communication with the Downtown Association, businesses operating on that block. And then we've also heard feedback from citizens in that area about some of the impacts to the access, and there's just some interest in reopening that, but then also a lot of interest in keeping that space closed and being able to use it for special events ongoing. So want to continue to explore options there for that block, and planning to bring back a recommendation at the September 28 meeting for sort of the ongoing use of that block closure. And then, with the Kathcart partial closure, we are recommending extending that through December 31, 2022, along with the other extensions that we're granting, just because that block has been very well received and are really benefiting from that, and we want to continue to support that use in that area. Those are our recommendations. I would welcome any questions at this time.
Thanks, Rebecca. That's a really good presentation. Councilmember Cummings?
Thanks for that presentation, and I do just want to thank Ball Over and Economic Development for all the hard work you've been doing trying to make these outdoor dining opportunities happen, something that's, as Rebecca, as you mentioned, it has been a lifeline for many businesses. And so many businesses have, you know, wanting to be compliant, and this has really helped them to comply with the county guidelines and continue to operate their businesses. So I just want to express my appreciation for everything you all have been doing to keep these businesses afloat. I had one question, and then I had some comments later. But the one question I had in the agenda was that, at one point, it discusses, you know, working with the planning to draft revisions to the municipal code and downtown plan, and then it mentioned taking these revision commissions. And I was wondering if this would go to the planning commission as well, because it sounds like there's revisions being made to the downtown plan, and there's going to be a lot of work with planning. I was just curious, in that list of commissions that this, that these might go to, why the planning commission was left out?
That's a great question. I think it's available, but we would be taking it to any relevant commissions that it needs to be reviewed by, but we-
I'll chime in. Any changes to the downtown plan would be required to go to the planning commission for recommendation before coming to the council.
Great. Yeah, that's my only, I just saw that the planning commission was left out of that list, and so I was curious as to why. And so, thanks for that clarification, and that's, those are all the questions right now.
Next, we have councilmember Conner Terry-Jones.
Thank you so much for the presentation and all the work that you've done to bring it to this point. I had a couple of questions for clarification. So the administrative use permits are used to determine hours of operation, security enhancement, noise restrictions for, for businesses that are using private property, correct? Is that, so can you, can you help distinguish, why don't we have those same concerns for businesses that are using public property?
Yeah, great question. So public property is dictated more in terms of the planning department reviews and public works generally, sort of the streets and sidewalks in those areas. We do, for the parklets, we do design review permit through the planning department in those public parking areas that are typically a lot more in the commercial districts. And so there is review and there are conditions of approval that do cover those noise requirements and those different things as well. And then the administrative use permit process on private property, those spaces might be more adjacent to residential areas, or just might have more circulation requirements to those different things. So those reviews are done. But there are, it's just in between the public and private.
Got it. Okay, so both, both spaces are reviewed, it's just a little bit of a different process, is that? Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then, the permitting cost, does that apply to businesses that are on both the private and public?
Are you saying-
Structure permitting cost will look like?
Yeah. Did you have a-
Well, you know, I'm glad this question came up, because I realized we didn't address this in the staff report, and there were some comments about this. You have one distinction, and we, you know, currently, there is a plan, there is a fee for when you submit an application. The distinction that we, we were making on the public spaces is on top of any fee, we have an actual parking deficiency. So there's this sort of doubling assessment for those that are doing parklets, let's just say example in the downtown. So we were looking at ways, and that's part of some of the revisions that we're proposing to make, that didn't work as well in our pilot parklet program, is that we realized there were some additional fees there that really didn't need to be there, and really trying to streamline that. I think if you wanted us to consider evening the fees or reducing the fees for, on private spaces, that's definitely something we would need to sit down with planning and look at the cost of those. That's just a whole separate process. So I, I think from the recovery perspective, I think it makes sense for us to sort of talk through that and look at what the cost of that would be, and return to you for that discussion.
Okay, great. That's helpful. And I just noticed, I know that each city is different, I just noticed how low Capitol and Waterville's permit fees were compared to ours, and I don't know if you can comment on that, but there's was like, I don't know, like this much of what ours was. So, but those are my questions. Thank you.
I just want to add a bit more context there, too. So on the private property side, you know, the businesses go through that permit process, and there's sort of one fee that happens. There's no ongoing fee for use of that space versus the public, the public property, we have the initial permit fees, and then we have the ongoing license fees for the maintenance of those spaces. So just want to make sure that was clear.
Great. Are there other questions from councilmembers at this point? Okay, I will go ahead and bring this out to our public attendees now. This will be for item number 20, let me draw my script here, make sure, item number 29. If you are interested in commenting on this item, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you've been unmuted. The timer will- minutes. I've got the first person with their phone number ending in 7646. Go ahead and press star six, and you'll get unmuted, and you can speak. Seven, there you go. Go ahead, please.
Hello. Hi, is this working?
It is.
Oh, great. Fabulous, sorry. Hi, my name is Karen Madera, and I am the owner of Brady's Yacht Club and also The Jury Room here in Santa Cruz. And I just wanted to give everybody on the council and all of the staff just a huge thank you and acknowledgement of the hard work that has gone into looking at the program. And also just to say how absolutely vital it has been to the survival of our businesses. And we have been working really hard to, to just get through this and to keep the safety of the public in mind during this time. And these patios absolutely have been a lifeline. And I know that a lot of people have said that already, but, you know, I just can't stress enough that without these, we definitely would have gone. So, yeah, just a big help and a thank you for that. And we are really excited to hear that the city is, is working to extend this program for us and also to help everybody, you know, move forward towards permanence, because people absolutely love these patios. They feel very safe for a lot of people, especially with the rise of the Delta variant. We have been, you know, it seems like we're getting hit again, and yet there's just a lot less, I guess, kind of acknowledgement the way that it was the first time around. So this feels a lot safer for a lot of people. And we just wanted to also say thank you for making the distinction between private property and the public property, because that was definitely getting a little confusing. Also, Bonnie sent out an email, I believe yesterday, that recommended having a bunch of the business owners and managers meet up with city staff, and I just wanted to also voice, just voice my support for that. Thank you very much.
Bonnie, you're muted.
Barking dog today. Next up is Rami Kay, and if you could press star six to unmute yourself, please.
Hello again. This is Rami Kayali. I'm the owner of Mellow Mellow Cabbar. We're a business on the 1100 block. I was one of the first to build a parklet on the public space, and I got hit with a red tag and a warning that I would be fined $1,200 a day unless it met the planning department's requirements. So after talking to an engineer and an architect, the engineer told me it would be $6,000 to get this structure analyzed. So, you know, I had to essentially take it down and put up a platform. So now I don't have a shelter on top of the platform that we have, and we're just coming around the corner to hopefully what is going to be a rainy season, because I know we need that more so than I need a few dollars in my pocket. But I'm kind of curious as to, going to be the recourse here for people looking to build a shelter, because that's going to be the largest kind of stick in the mud as we move into the rainy season, and, you know, we're going to be sitting outside because Delta's not looking like it's going to relent anytime soon. And all this talk has been great, but I haven't heard anything about, you know, sheltering for some of the customers who don't want to sit under an umbrella when it's pouring rain and super windy. And I've seen other cities have already allowed, and Berkeley, where some of my other businesses do have this, and I'm just kind of wondering why the city of Santa Cruz was, A, working against and not really helping, and then, B, why we're vacillating so long on this and what the, what the holdup is on doing this. So those are my two points that I'd like to raise and want to get an answer on. But more importantly, maybe some other avenues for you guys to give grants for some of these businesses, or having a pre-approved preferred contractor list and some preferred designs. It just, it's been a year now, and we still haven't seen the ball move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Zachary Davis.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Well, to say that COVID has forced a lot of us to move outside of our comfort zone, I think is a fast understatement. And I really want to recognize the work the city has done. I know a lot of, what the city does is trying to mitigate risk and reduce liability and stick to compliance. And what you all are doing for those of us in the, in the restaurant industry really means a lot in terms of being creative and being flexible. And, and then looking forward, I really applaud this decision to create the time, which will in turn create the space, to look at, at what's going on and the best paths forward, both in the public and private property, patios and extension areas that have been made. So recognizing that this isn't going away and, and the commitment to, you know, the individual level of outreach and creating the time to do that, I think is, is really great. I do think there were some great points brought up by both Karen and Rami. You know, obviously, low-interest loans, potentially forgivable loans, things like that, that could help out some of the businesses that work it the hardest financially could certainly be helpful. And yeah, just again, really appreciate all the work y'all are doing. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next up is phone number ending in 1424.
Hi, this is Dorian from the Downtown Association calling in. I think you guys can hear me? Yeah, okay.
Yes, we can.
Hi. So I'm glad that so many of the businesses downtown are calling in on their own to express their appreciation and their concerns about this program to you guys directly. I definitely wanted to speak on behalf of, you know, the 47 downtown outdoor dining area. I know that it has been a lifeline to so many of them. I know that they are also grateful for the really quick work that went into making that possible. And I guess I just wanted to point out a couple of things. One is that, you know, when I saw Rebecca's timeline, it really hit me that, you know, this started in March, and it's really only been December month that the restaurants have been able to, customers using their outdoor dining areas. So this extension of, of time on that investment that they've made is, I think, really critical to those businesses being able to recover that investment. And it certainly has been not only a lifeline for those businesses, but really the marker of vibrant seed downs. I mean, al fresco dining has been a visible and vibrant part of life downtown, and it's really important aspect, I think, of our community's health. So we're just really, really appreciative of all the work the city's done, that's gone into this program so far. And then the one thing I just wanted to point out, council, because I think this is where you guys could really be most supportive is, you know, as Rebecca was describing in her, in her presentation, I think quite, quite well, there were only two businesses prior to the pandemic that were able to take advantage of the program the way that it is. So enabling businesses to be able to transition to something permanent does mean changing the permanent program and providing the type of support that, you know, some of the businesses have already mentioned, like low interest or forgivable loans or grants to actually construct these parklets, if that's out of reach for the businesses given, you know, the pandemic they've just been through, what they're tasked with, as well as waiving or modifying or offsetting fees for use of those spaces on an ongoing basis. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that wanted to speak to this item today? If you could press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, bring it back. Oh, I see a number, yeah, phone number ending in 0969. Go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself. Go ahead, please.
Hey, councilmembers, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. This is Anthony Carlson, and I work for Distributorship here in, in Waco, Santa Cruz, is one of my sales territories. Anyway, I'm just calling to express my support for, I guess, a hopefully permanent solution to, to, well, I'm calling to support or ask for you to essentially, not to speak in too ideal of terms, but to try to remove as much bureaucratic nuance as possible and really kind of, you know, approach the situation from a triage, you know, standpoint, and, and make it as easy as possible for, for all these businesses to not only maintain their, their current outdoor seating, but, but, you know, add to construction and make sure that they're able to sustain themselves through the winter and so on and so forth. You know, I, I see it a lot when I travel around the Bay Area for work, and, you know, it would be, I think, along the lines of what Santa Cruz likes to consider itself as in terms of a bike-friendly city and a, you know, a walkable city and so on. And I know there are concerns about parking and whatnot, but I think, you know, when you look at, at how, how potentially beneficial this could be, that, in a handful of parking spaces, or at least temporarily until a new garage is constructed, to me anyway, seems to pale in comparison to what we stand to potentially lose if we don't, you know, do everything possible to support these businesses. And yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, I have phone number ending in 7663.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, it's Ian McCray. I own Hulu's Island Grill and Tiki Room in Kathcart Street. And first, I, obviously, I want to thank the city, everybody that's been involved in, in helping us through this pandemic. Been absolutely amazing. And I know I speak for all of us businesses downtown that we feel that way. A couple of things I wanted to bring up. One is that, you know, that now, it seems like the dining experience has now changed dramatically, and- changed dramatically and I don't see how we're, we can go back. And the reason I say this is what the public is going to start to, to demand, which is to sit out, outside. I, I, I hate to think about another, you know, variant of this, of this COVID coming up, you know, a year from now or so, but I think we have to think in those terms. And, and, you know, and now we are, you know, fully, you know, prepared for it. One, one of the ancillary benefits I've noticed too is that we've all become a little more green in our businesses and that's because of the trees that we planted, the trees the city brought in, the other plantings we've done, and also not having to heat and light the insides of our, of our building has, has made us all more green. And then I guess the last thing I wanted to say was I, I did, which is probably a topic for another day, but a vision of, of Cathcart Street as, as Restaurant Row from Cedar to, to Front and incorporating what's going to be the sort of pathway to the, to the San Lorenzo River. We've got this, you know, there's a potential for, I think, 15 restaurants on those two blocks. And we get that great afternoon sun and have... All right, well, I'm, I'm done. Thank you guys all again. Very appreciative.
Thank you, Ian.
Any other raised hands? I'll bring it back to council. Yeah, I just, a quick comment and myself before I call on council member Cummings. Yeah, I just really want to recognize our staff. They have just done amazing work through the entire pandemic and they've just really, really tried to work to help our businesses stay viable. And, you know, they, they've done that even with some obstacles, you know, like rules that were on the books and then just trying to kind of rework how we envision the downtown. And I do think, I think the last speaker sort of on the head where, you know, I think in general, people just enjoy that experience. And I think we are on to kind of a new realm of expectation in terms of how our, our restaurants compete with other areas. And so it's exciting to see people, you know, really enjoying being outside. And so I really just want to recognize though our economic development staff, along with a lot of other things that are on your plate, you're also really paying attention and helping our local businesses throughout the city, not just downtown, but throughout the city. So I just want to recognize you guys for that. And I will go ahead. Bonnie, did you have a response to one of the questions that came up that you wanted to say?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And first I just wanted to acknowledge your acknowledgement and say, say a couple of things about Rebecca and Nathan who really have been day in, day out, running this program, working one-on-one with businesses with the support of a few other folks on our ED team that have been critical. And I, I, including David, and just, I also really want to acknowledge across all the departments. We mentioned them in the staff report, but I'm not expecting the other departments to have read the staff report. But this really has not been an effort just of ED. It really has been an effort, you know, across the board, fire, PD, you know, Parks and Rec, Public Works, you know, traffic planning. And, you know, it's just, it, it really has been a real team effort. And everyone has recognized that, you know, our businesses needed support during this time. So I just wanted to make, make, spreading the acknowledgement to them because we would not have been able to do this without, without their support and understanding and flexibility. Really, they have made this, made this possible and made the extension possible as well. Like when we sat down with them and talked through some of, some of the challenges, and there have been, you know, some challenges, they were right at the table helping, helping us come up with solutions. So I did, I did want to acknowledge them as well and really, really grateful that we're all working together on this. I also wanted to mention a couple of the suggestions that came up are things that have come up in, in some of our outreach meetings. And that's part of what we want to work on this year. I've mentioned in some past council meetings that we've been in discussions with Santa Cruz Community Credit Union, who's been a great partner with us during our first micro loan program. And we've been talking about being able to put together some grants, active loans, but have a forgivable component of the city portion to really help the offset of building out some of these parklets. So I did want to mention that, the suggestion about the pre-approved list of contractors is something that was an idea that came up that we, we also have been, have been really something that we want to include going forward as well as design. And one thing that came up that I want to acknowledge is that as we look at this transitioning to permanence, we also want to acknowledge, it's not necessarily one size fits all. We definitely do want some designs, but there's different levels of design. There are some that are permanent, that are in the temporary program right now that actually with very little effort could become permanent. And they still fit within the overall sort of design. It doesn't have to be, you know, a $40,000 to $100,000 investment. However, there are some that may be really interested in investing in, you know, a new design that are just now using that, you know, the wa, the water barriers or the K-rails. And those can be where we have some of these grants going forward if, if they want to really make that investment. So I guess my, my point is that we do see that there could be a range of options for transitioning to permanence and recognize it's not necessarily one size fits all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bonnie. Councilmember Cummings?
Thank you. Well, I just want to thank everyone again for all their hard work. And as Bonnie mentioned, you know, there's so many departments in the city that deserve recognition for all the work on this because, you know, moving people into the street is not necessarily the safest thing, but we've managed to do it in a way that's been safe. And so, you know, there's a lot of appreciation that needs to go out to all those other businesses. I'm, I have been speaking with a lot of the business owners over the past few, not only days, but weeks as we've been leading up to this point and, and months, you know, with everything that's happened last year with COVID. And I know that they're really going to appreciate, you know, being able to extend their outdoor services, especially if they can move to, to permanence. And so I've wanted to prepare a motion to make that builds mostly on the staff's recommendation. And Bonnie, I was actually wondering maybe if I could share my screen so I could just highlight where the major changes came in. And then maybe if you could put that up after. But I thought that, let's see, this might be an easier way so I can just highlight the changes. But the motion would be to number one, bring back on or before the second meeting in October, a revised temporary outdoor expansion program, emergency ordinance that A, extends a temporary period for outdoor seating in public and private spaces currently set to expire at the end of this December through December 31st, 2022. Two, direct staff to work with businesses operating these spaces to make any necessary changes needed to address maintenance and help A, transition to permanent programs prior to the emergency ordinance expiration. Three, direct staff working on the necessary revisions to the municipal code for future council consideration to reflect the desire to expand outdoor seating in private and public on-street parking, parklets citywide, including A, finalizing the revisions to the parklet design guidelines, including approved platform designs and materials, safety features, accessibility requirements and shade materials. And B, revising the B structure for parklets and private outdoor seating and evaluate the potential to waive, modify or offset fees on an appropriate timescale to facilitate pandemic business recovery. And then added in the fourth staff recommendation that we heard today. And just to provide a little bit of explanation on the changes, you know, in case it takes longer than September 28th, I was just thinking that maybe we could build in a little bit more flexibility. And I spoke with staff on Friday and they said that that might be beneficial on their end as well. So, you know, really expressing the intent that we do want this to come back as soon as possible, but if we need to build in some more flexibility for staff, that we can provide them that timeframe. With A, I just added in, I bet public and private spaces, it sounded like from staff's perspective, that's, that was the intent is to expand outdoor dining for everyone through December 31st, 2022. I eliminated B because it, it sounded like in two, number two, we captured what we were trying to get across in B, which is directing staff to work with businesses to help aid that transition to a permanent program prior to the, the expiration of the emergency ordinance. So it seemed like, you know, what B was really trying to get at was working with businesses on private properties and extending that deadline. But by incorporating private into A, and then, you know, with the language that says that we're directing staff to work with businesses to aid the permanent programs, it seemed like that captured everything. So there wasn't really a need to have B. And then I added private to number three. It's come up a number of times in our conversation today that there might be opportunities, depending on how businesses are operating, to look at our municipal code around the administrative use permit. And if it seems like there might be a need to change some of the language in that, this is an opportunity for us to really take a look at that. And so providing this direction would, would give staff that flexibility and the opportunity to bring forward any necessary changes to that administrative use in the process on private property. And then I think we did hear some comments from other council members. I think council member Calentari Johnson was bringing up the private fees that, and the fees around use of outdoor dining that differ between others, other jurisdictions and ourselves. And if there's an opportunity for us to potentially, you know, lower those fees for these businesses that are operating outdoors during this period, maybe we can do that. And then I changed from the offset from one to two years to on an appropriate timescale because, you know, we still don't know what's going to happen with COVID. And I mean, we just, prior to this, or after, I should say, the agenda report came out, we got the mandate from the, the county health officer to, you know, have masks indoors. So just building in more flexibility around timescales so that we're not kind of holding ourselves to a specific time and having to bring this back and forth. And then I added in the staff recommendation. So that's the motion that I, I was making and, and that's all I have. And I also noticed that there were two members of the public who raised their hands after we closed out. So I don't know if there was any desire to have those people speak.
Yeah, I was gonna go back that way myself. Go ahead and go back out. Technically, we closed public comment, but I see two hands raised. So I'll go ahead and go back out to public comment. We are kind of running late by about a half an hour. So I'm just trying to keep, keep, keep us rolling here. So phone number ending in 6302, please. You could press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi there. This is Tristan. Wanted to air a couple of the things that have already been mentioned, but also just sort of go over the importance of what this means, not only to the community, but also outside of that community, meaning restaurants, bars, gyms, et cetera. I work in the distribution side as well, similar to Anthony who spoke earlier. And just the impact that this, as far as financially, it's really impactful. I mean, what you guys have been able to do by adding these parklets and keeping these businesses in business is just keeping so many other businesses in business. From the drivers that are making these deliveries to, you know, the people that are actually visiting and, and, you know, patronizing these businesses, to someone like me, you know, a sales representative, trying to, you know, stay from being furloughed and, and looking for other work outside of our community. I just want to say thank you for being able to put these things in place and the impact that they're having outside of just that world. And I just, I just hope that you guys are very aware of how grateful that we are for you allowing us to continue to work. It's, it's very impactful on, on a lot of different aspects outside of just what's happening within the restaurant. Same thing with the food service people, you know, who are actually delivering this food and keeping these restaurants going. Without this, we would lose a big part of our culture in the community. I think, you know, being able to have these outside spaces has allowed the community to have some semblance of normalcy while doing it in a safe and appropriate way, as well as the beautification that, you know, these parklets have provided versus just parking spots. You know, I really love going through our downtown area now. I know many others have as well. Pairs into how it, you know, has been. I think it's just a wonderful addition. So I just want to say thank you for all the work that you're doing and please keep up this good work. The more permanent of these sort of things and the ability to build out these parklets or these private property parking lots have been converted into patios. I mean, it's, it's just a wonderful thing and I hope it can just continue to grow because it's keeping, you know, it's keeping me afloat with the job. So I really, everything that you guys are doing.
Thank you very much. Next caller is Laura. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, I don't want to take up too much time. This is Laura. I own Russian downtown. And I also want to thank everyone for this consideration. I think we've learned that, that seating not only helps with COVID-19, but we've also reduced the transmission of all the other colds and illnesses that go around. And it's just an all-around healthier aspect. And also just that a lot of the businesses are barely, kind of, we're just barely trying to get out of our economic crisis. And even though the, the throes of the pandemic with the vaccine have kind of subsided a little bit, we're all really just at the beginning of recouping everything. And so the outdoor seating has been a lifeline, as other people have already said. And so I just want to say thank you and I look forward to seeing what changes are going to happen.
Great. Thank you, Laura. I'll bring it back over to council. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second for that motion? And I just wanted to double check with staff or, or are those changes amenable to you folks?
You know, in looking at them, I think they all look fine. I, I would like to recommend on council member Cummings, is, is this his version? No.
No. Did, oh, did you make these changes, Bonnie?
Yes, this is his.
Okay.
Okay.
That on number three, where it says direct staff to start working on the necessary, could we add the word any necessary? And the, I, I think I just clarified that because we, we don't know yet until that the public parklets are not addressed adequately at all. There is, it's pretty flexible, we think, on, for the private spaces. But if we just add that word any, I think that clarifies the intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Councilmember Brown?
I was just getting the motion. Thank you. And thanks, Bonnie, for weighing in.
We have a motion by councilmember Cummings. That's up on the screen. And a second of by councilmember Brown. And councilmember Watkins?
I just had a, a quick question or, or comment. Well, one, I'll just echo all the appreciation for our team and, and everybody who's involved and, and just also the communication strategy with the businesses based on, and in general, it's nice to have outdoor seating. So all around a good thing. In regards to potential fee structure changes and funding and resources, I'm just wondering how any of the recovery dollars could factor into that, especially in some of these immediate kind of circumstances we're in right now?
You know, I think just knowing our overall city financial picture and that the funding coming in is less what our structural deficit, I, I think at least what our initial recommendation would be for us to really look at our ED trust fund to see what we could recommend as an offset. So I think that's part of what we'll look at and come, come back with you to really have a discussion and your consideration.
Is there any potential for some of the like county business development dollars? Like how that could factor in potentially into a resource that's available county-wide for businesses?
We'll certainly follow up with them and, and see.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Great. If there's not any other questions, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. We have a motion by councilmember Cummings, second of by council Brown, councilmember Brown. And let's do the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bruner has disqualified herself. And Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Great. Thank you for every, all the work you guys. Next up, we have item number 30. And this is a request from the Homeless Garden Project to relocate the site of the planned Poguenet Farm and Gardens from the Lower Main Meadow to the Upper Main Meadow in the Poguenet Open Space. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. We have translation services available for this item. These instructions will also be provided on the screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff. And I believe the Homeless Garden Project is here today too to participate in the presentation, followed by questions from the city council. We will then take public comment and then return to the council for deliberation and action. So I will go ahead and turn this over to Noah Downey, our park planner. So I will go ahead and turn this over to Noah Downey, our parks planner, and I believe also Kathy Calfo from the Homeless Garden Project is also here today as part of this presentation. Hi, Noah.
Noah, and Tony Elliott will be providing the presentation.
Okay. Tony?
Yeah, thanks, Noah, and I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. I'm wondering if we should have Peter kind of explain how the interpretation module works from there?
Sure, if that works, yeah, sure. Is Peter on? I don't see him in the list, but I don't recognize his cell phone.
He is, he is on.
He's on, okay. Go ahead, Peter, if you could explain the process, if that was clear to you. So we're going to do a presentation by the staff, and then the Homeless Garden Project would like to participate in that presentation, and then we will bring it back for, before we bring it out for public comment.
So now Peter is not here. Sorry. I don't know where he went. He was here earlier, but, okay.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll move on. We're running a little bit late, so if Peter comes back on, Bonnie, just text me and we'll go from there.
I see him now.
Yes, hi, Peter. You're muted, Peter.
He's not muted. It's, I'm gonna, Peter.
Oh, he's doing translation, got it.
Peter, I'm gonna remove you as a translator, and then I'll add you as a translator again. Okay.
Thanks. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello? Can you all hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, when we go into the interpretation, it's this weird thing about Zoom, then you can't hear me at this zone that only the people who require translation. Anyway, let me translate for the, because I think most people were going to be listening to it, not really going on their computer and looking for translation through a chat. Para los que nos están escuchando y lo que queremos anunciarles, primero me llamo Peter Bichier, soy el vocero de la comunidad, voy a estar aquí traduciendo un poquito lo que está pasando y querer presentar lo que está pasando con el Homeless Garden Project, un proyecto de ellos para tratar de ocupar la parte de Pogonip y entonces estaré interpretando ese tópico ahorita.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, I will go ahead and turn this over to Tony, and we'll go, and I see Kathy's on as well. Welcome, Kathy.
Right. Thank you, Mayor Myers and City Council for the director, Tony Elliott, Parks Recreation Director. Our Parks Superintendent Travis Beck is also here, as well as Parks Planner Noah Downing, and Kathy Calfo from Homeless Garden Project as well. So I'll turn it over to Kathy in just a couple moments after some introductory remarks and Peter and his time as well, so thanks. So just a little bit of background, primarily for the public, I think the council is aware, but the Parks and Recreation Department has a Pogonip master plan that was approved in 1998. The master plan designates the Lower Main Meadow as a scientific garden to be developed and managed by the Homeless Garden Project. In late 2018, the city discovered evidence of lead contamination in the Lower Meadow as a result of historic skeet shooting. So in light of this contamination, Homeless Garden Project is seeking an alternative location for the home of its future farm. With the city council packet is a letter from the Homeless Garden Project, the city council, with a proposal to amend the Pogonip master plan in order to provide an opportunity to move their farm development from the Lower Meadow to the Upper Meadow. The proposal from Homeless Garden Project includes suggested text edits to the Pogonip master plan and conceptual site maps in the Upper Meadow. So Homeless Garden Project has done some initial soil testing in the Upper Meadow and plans to conduct a biotic assessment in the spring of 2022. The Pogonip master plan provides a vision for the intended use of the Upper Meadow, which is to preserve and restore the Meadow for the purposes of habitat and sensitive species, and to renovate the Pogonip for education purposes and special events. And undoubtedly, Homeless Garden Project serves a very noble and important cause here in Santa Cruz. The Parks and Recreation Staff, along with the Planning Department, see the proposal from Homeless Garden Project as a potentially significant change from the current plan and the vision for Meadow. So to that end, we recommend that the consideration of amendments to the master plan include an open and public process. Amendments to the Pogonip master plan will potentially have, or will have, real costs associated with staff time, secret review, and may have opportunity costs such as affecting implement the vision for the Pogonip clubhouse as set forth by the master plan. So just want to share this to provide, again, just kind of the staff perspective on the proposal before the council. So should the council give direction today to consider amendments to the Pogonip master plan? Staff recommend that the item be considered by the Parks and Recreation Commission as a next step. And I'll just say that Homeless Garden Project has been a partner of the city and of Parks and Recreation for many, many years. And I think on behalf of both of us, it's been a frustrating challenge to learn about and really face these issues with contamination in the Lower Meadow. So as we try to grapple with this and talk about the future of the farm and the parks, the open space here, we just really sincerely appreciate the feedback and guidance from the city council on this topic. So with that introduction, I want to hand it over to Kathy Calfo with Homeless Garden Project.
Thanks, Tony. I think Bonnie Bush is going to share a slide presentation for me. I was afraid to learn the technology on this. While she's doing that, I will just let you know that I'm a former board president of the Homeless Garden Project and was co-chair of the capital fundraising campaign for the farm at Pogonip. I also want to say that Derry Ganshorn, who I know you all know, who's the executive director of the project, is dying that she's not here with you this afternoon, but she is on the plane, and she's on the way to the East Coast to see her grandkids for the first time since before COVID, and to meet one of them for the first time. So we really miss her, and it's tough to fill in for her, but I will do my best. I also want to mention that the Homeless Garden Project Board Chair Beth Montgomery is tuning in along with a number of board members, staff, and Claude Rosen, the project operations director, is here with me in case you have any questions, but for some reason I'm not able to answer. I'm going to start, before we roll the slides, with just giving a quick background for everyone about the Homeless Garden Project and to say two things. It's really bittersweet for us to be here. We thought at this time we'd be holding our groundbreaking. We raised three and a half million dollars to a park, expected to be breaking ground at this time. But in many ways, we believe that this process is potentially leading us to a better place. I also want to stress that we really believe in the democratic process. We're strong protectors of the environment, and we are looking forward to a very open and transparent process as we, now with the community, what our proposal is. So the background on the Homeless Garden Project is that the project provides job training in the form of paid transitional employment with support services to unhoused men and women. The twelve-month program can serve up to twenty trainees currently. At Pogonip, over time, we see that expanding to fifty. Program participants are contributing food assistance, health services, and one-on-one social work to help them support their goals. Tracking our results, and this is probably the most important thing I want to tell you in this part of the presentation, over the past seven years, the project reports that ninety-seven percent of graduates move into a steady source of income and ninety percent get into housing. That's a pretty amazing feat for a very small project that has an annual budget of 1.2 million dollars a year, and it wouldn't be possible without the engagement on a regular basis, not during COVID, but under normal conditions of, you know, between 2,500 and 3,000 volunteers every year who work out on the farm, side by side with unhoused men and women who are working to change their lives. And it's a mutually supportive relationship. Volunteers learn a lot about what it means to be unhoused in Santa Cruz, the city of Santa Cruz, and then the unhoused really feel like there's a community there supporting them, which makes a big difference and I think contributes to those results. One last thing about the project that a lot of people don't know is that we share a lot of healthy food and produce with county members that wouldn't have access to it otherwise. We distribute almost 700 shares of organic produce through ten community agencies, including, for example, hospice, and work with Growing the Table to distribute 6,000 boxes of organic produce to about 20 agencies and to the Galt School. So I'm going to recap on the next slide, if we could keep it, a little bit of the timeline that Tony started to go over. The Pogonip master plan was adopted in 1998. I never thought I would read a full EIR or the full Pogonip master plan, but as we started encountering some of the challenges Tony described, we did. And one of the things is that in the Pogonip master plan, the Homeless Garden Project is identified as an essential component, which I'd never really run across before. But the project didn't pick where it would decide it. That was a given when the environmental review was done, but the project was always looked at in the EIR and in the documents as a key component of the project. When the master plan included the Homeless Garden Project, the Homeless Garden Project, I think initially was farming on Pelson Avenue before the city sold that land. It's moved now over to Natural Bridges. The project has never had a permanent home, and so this was really a dream for us. And we've been on land donated by Ron Swenson on the West Side for over 20 years now. He, as a lot of you know, has planned to put housing on that property and has been very anxious for us to move off, which is the urgency, some of the urgency that we're feeling here. In nineteen, between 1998 and 2008, Homeless Garden Project really worked to build its infrastructure, and I think under the leadership of Derry Ganshorn really proved that the program could work, strengthened it, started to show the kinds of results that we're seeing now. And we have the kind of program that today, when we can build a permanent home, we'll be able to double and eventually triple the number of people we serve. In May 2017, after a lot of work, we met the conditions to have the city approve a lease for the Lower Meadow at Pogonip, and we launched a capital campaign. That capital campaign, as we mentioned, I was the co-chair of, and we raised three and a half million dollars, which is, you know, a very successful campaign, I think really demonstrates the support. But I want to stress again, this is three and a half million dollars of community money that we're bringing to the table to invest in a city park. And I don't think that's something that happens every day. I think it's kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and we're excited and proud of that and want to be a good partner, both with the city and with the whole community. The site that we're looking at, the Lower Meadow, is very complex. In order to get to the point that we could get the design permit, which we got in September of 2018, we had to conduct a number of studies, do quite a bit of engineering work, get numerous permits, and we spent about $150,000 on those to get to the design permit phase in 2018. Then in December 2019, we concluded the capital campaign and hired a contractor who was ready to start construction in January. Just as they were out there, we got word from the city that we had to stop construction. That was a pretty heartbreaking moment for all of us, I have to say, including people at the Parks Department. We all shared in the discipline. We stopped construction, and if you go to the next slide, began to talk about how to move forward, knowing that the reason the construction was halted was that there had previously been skeet shooting, it had created some lead contamination. Interestingly, none of this was ever identified or looked at in the environmental impact reports or in the master plan that was done earlier, so it was a pretty stunning surprise for everyone. It took us some time to pivot for a couple reasons. For one, the city didn't have funding to help us begin the soil testing, and so it took some time to do some grant proposals to secure funding to do the testing. And then once we got going on the testing, COVID hit, so we discovered that labs were backed up and weren't able to process them quickly. But eventually, we got the results back, and by this time, I'll just share with you the sort of internal community of Homeless Garden Project, the board of directors in particular, had a lot of concerns about mixing organic farming and a community project where volunteers work in the soil with the potential of lead contamination. As one of the people working on the committee to make this project happen and working with Derry Ganshorn, she and I decided, in our minds, that if we could come up with about four acres of farmable land in the Lower Meadow, we'd invested enough money that we wanted to keep going. The full board had, and to say they had mixed feelings is an understatement, a lot of concerns about the idea of farming, keeping people safe in that area. But we managed to convince them moving forward in good faith with our donors and the community commitments that we had made, and they agreed to do that so long as we would continue to explore other options at Pogonip to see if we could either possibly clean up other areas, if we could identify other land to put the farm on. So we were kind of working on multiple tracks, moving forward with the Lower, also beginning to explore what other options there might be to add on to the farming area. In our minds, that was going to be much later, you know, maybe in three to five years. We hired a new contractor to begin building the farm, and it didn't take him, you know, probably more than a couple of weeks to come back to us and say, you know, you can't build a farm on the site. It's not just for him, it wasn't so much about the lead content helped impact that the board had been worried about, although, you know, we're certainly concerned. But from a construction point of view, he thought this site was virtually impossible to build on. There are wetlands, there are endangered species, there's a, I'm going to go through a chart comparing the two sites in a minute, but from him, from a construction point of view, working around the contamination and areas that had various levels of lead contamination, including the road between the two areas that were deemed farmable, there's a road, and utilities were to be run through that road, construction costs would have to involve cleaning that up, which it's unclear whether that would mean hauling contaminated soil out or what kind of remediation would have to take. But his assessment was that this project was going to cost us twice as much money as we had raised at a minimum, and he strongly urged us to identify another site working with parks. And so that's when our committee really dug in, no pun intended, to other potential areas at Pogonip and landed on the Upper Meadow, if you can go to the next slide. I think the best way I can explain and why we chose the Upper Meadow as the best alternative after we reviewed the EIR and the documents, was when we put together this comparison and looked at the different pros and cons. The building site in the Lower Meadow is brand-new development on, other than lead contamination, what would otherwise have been pristine land. Upper Meadow existing area had been previously developed. The clubhouse is there, but I used to go there in the 80s when I worked at the Board of Supervisors for lunch, when it was a restaurant and there were swimming pools and a tennis court. Those have all been covered up. So where we're proposing to put the farm structures is near the clubhouse, where there used to be already developed land that's now covered up, previously a swimming pool and tennis courts. Coastal Terrace Prairie is identified in the EIR as an important resource to protect. We would be converting six acres about in the Lower Meadow and the Upper Meadow in the area that we've identified, which could change as public review goes on. There would only be about three and a half acres. Wetlands, there are multiple in the Lower Meadow. This is part of what logistically made creating a farm down there so challenging. There are no wetlands in the area that we're proposing to farm. Slopes in multiple areas in the Lower Meadow that we were having to do a lot of design accommodation for and farm design around to take into account erosion on the slopes. accommodation for and farm design around to take into account erosion on the slopes, there are none in the area that we're proposing to farm in the Upper Meadow. Tree removal was very significant. We already had permits when we were stopped, construction was stopped, to do extensive tree removal in the Lower Meadow, including more than 20 heritage trees. In the Upper Meadow, we'd only be removing some minor trees in the building site. Skeet shooting, we've talked about. Utilities, we think are much more practical in the Upper Meadow. And then we will have contiguous farm area up there. Where in the Lower Meadow, well, if we go to the next picture, I think, oh, no, it's not on the next picture, never mind. The, on the Lower Meadow, you would have two step areas separated by a very large wetland gully. So having the upper area is much better. And going to the next slide, but go ahead. I just realized that we do have a map that I can get you of what we're proposing that I had intended to put in here that shows how, exactly, how the buildings would be laid out, and they're in the packet that the council received along with the work on the amendments that we did. Really, our thought on that was we wanted to make the process as well-defined as we could as we head into it. We fully expect that the professional staff and others will look at the amendments we propose, add to them, potentially evaluate them, that it would go through a full, open, and transparent process. But we did engage with a number of well-respected land use consultants, I think, who helped us define what we think is a minor amendment to the Pogonip Master Plan, simply to move this existing facility from the Lower Meadow to the Upper Meadow, and then, of course, undertake the environmental review that would be needed. We are asking for the council to direct staff to initiate an amendment process at Master Plan. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but just the gist of it. Place discussion of the proposed amendment on the September Parks Commission agenda to get early feedback, to initiate the amendment process as expeditiously as possible. Raising $3.5 million was tough work, and now keeping it is really tough work. Some of the foundations and individuals who donated to this are beginning to ask what the status of the project is. I think COVID going on, people just figured, you know, that everything was delayed. But it is important to us to keep faith with those donors and the community to be able to lay out a clear timeline, even if it's a long. So I think this is a really seminal moment for the project, and we want a lot of clarity and a lot of reassurance for the donors and the community that we are moving forward in a responsible way. So that's why we're asking also for regular reports on this. One of our trainees was going to speak to you this afternoon, and she had to work at a second job at 4:00 PM. But I am going to share my screen with you and pull up a video that she was able to record at the farm just before she had to go to work. So bear with me for just a minute, and I will attempt to share this. If I could pull that first.
Yeah.
Got someone helping me here, one second. Share. I'm going to click on that. Here.
If you would have told me just a few short months ago that I would have been asked to speak for the city of Santa Cruz, honestly, I would have told you that you are crazy.
I don't think that's.
No one tells you that life is easy, but I believe it's as hard as you make it.
One sec, one sec, give me one more minute.
Kathy, you can also email it to me if you want, I can.
You know what I was worried, Bonnie, is that the, that the file might be too big.
Oh.
Does she have sharing, Bonnie, did you give her sharing capability?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So Kathy, we can hear it, but we're not seeing it for some reason. I don't know if you can, you have to have it on your, open on your screen and then press Share Screen and then start the video.
Okay, one sec.
So open the video and then go down to the green box on Zoom and say Share Screen, and you'll see the, your, your actual computer screen show up, and you want to click on that, and then that will put the video in front of us, and then you, you'll press Play.
Okay, great. I think we just figured it out. I had to change a number of permissions on my computer. So I'm going to share screen, and then I'm going to open this one more time.
Yeah, we're not seeing it yet. You won't be able to see it once you share it. Only we'll be able to see it.
Okay, bear with me one minute.
Yep.
Where? There? We, oh, we tried our best.
Okay. We were hearing the, we were hearing the audio, if you want to.
Can I play it for you? Do you mind? And you can, it's a shame you can't see her because she's so eloquent, but if it's okay, I'm going to play it.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay.
Me just a few short months ago that I would have been asked to speak for the city of Santa Cruz. Honestly, I would have told you that you are crazy. No one tells you that life is easy, but I believe it's as hard as you make it. And for me, I made my life extremely hard for a long time. However, my life didn't start out that way, and it doesn't have to end that way either. My name is Rachel Summers. I'm 27 years old, and I am a trainee at the Homeless Garden Project. I was born into a loving family in St. Louis, Missouri. My sister Erica was born two minutes later, and we both went on to what seemed to me as a normal life. My parents provided for my sister and I the best they could. They, we went on family vacations, we based family traditions, and they gave us all love and support and stability. With all these things, I still never felt like an individual. For 18 years, I lived in the same house, I went to the same school, and had the same dysfunctional family that made me think that the chaos was normal. My mom was an alcoholic from the time I was born until the time I was about 12 or 13. She has been sober ever since. She was and continues to be one of my biggest role models and teachers and leaders in this journey for me. Watching my mom get to see the promises that sobriety brings had a huge positive impact in our relationship at the time where I needed my mom the most. Unfortunately, I did not learn from my mom's mistakes. I just heard stories and used them as ideas, bad decisions. My sister and I were always expected to have good grace, be home for dinner at 7:00 PM every night, and follow strict rules. However, as I grew older, every freedom, every drop of freedom I got, the more trouble I would find myself in. Drugs and alcohol came into my life at a young age. I was arrested three times before I even graduated high school. Everything ranging from shoplifting to distributions of narcotics. My sister became my partner and my partner in crime and my best friend. This was right before we were to be separated by hundreds of miles for the next eight years. After all my trouble in high school and longing for independence, I moved to San Diego for school, all by myself, and my sister moved to UC, moved to Santa Cruz and went to UCSD. No one knew that I was a twin in San Diego. I could finally be my own person. This started the journey of changing my geography to change my problems. For a long part of my life, I blamed my problems on anyone but myself. I would find any excuse to blame them on anyone or anything else. Two years in San Diego and then five years back in my hometown of St. Louis, Missouri, landed me in some of very high and very low places. Some of the best memories of my life was in that time. I met many amazing people, graduated from college, I started a job, and I became a dog mom for the next 10 years. This time also led to many broken hearts, many stressful, abusive relationships, unhealthy jobs, I found myself doing drugs on a daily basis. With all those things I gained, my choices caused me to lose everything. Due to my addiction, I lost every single job I ever had, countless relationships, material items, my dignity, and most of all, my self-respect. So I decided to run from my problems once again. January of 2020, I made the decision to move to Orange County by myself, escape some of the wreckage I had caused. I wanted a fresh start. I wanted my problems to disappear. However, I only brought them with me. A dozen more jobs lost, moving from place to place and burning every bridge along the way. This run took me to a new low. I found myself homeless for the first time, facing a whole trauma I knew nothing about. I crossed lines I never thought I would. I became a different person using any drugs I could get my hands on to forget about where I was. My family didn't even know if I was alive or dead. Out of what I thought was one last ounce of desperation, I finally contacted my sister in Santa Cruz and asked if I could stay, come stay with her to get back on my feet. Santa Cruz has always had a special place in my heart. After every year, this town quickly became my home away from home. Having had the opportunity to live here has been one of the best and one of the worst things that ever happened to me. I quickly landed back on the streets in Santa Cruz, living in a tent and doing any drugs I could get my hands on once again to forget about where I was. I got involved in a very abusive and manipulative relationship, but I just wanted to survive. This round landed me in the hospital for three days with pancreatitis, chasping deficiency, and excruciating withdrawals. When I heard my dad tell me, "I don't want to bury you," as I lay helpless in Dominican Hospital, I decided I finally had enough. The nurse handed me a list of resources in the area and the Homeless Garden Project at the top. I started an inpatient drug and alcohol treatment program when I got out of the hospital. They made all the clients get jobs, and the Homeless Garden Project instantly popped into my mind. Walking up to the first, the farm for the first time is something I will never forget. There's a beautiful community of people from all different backgrounds for a common goal. My whole life, I always struggled to find a sense of self or a sense of happiness. I always tried searching for ways to fit in in order to be looked at as an individual. I finally stopped looking for happiness in different locations, different relationships, jobs, schools, et cetera. The sense of happiness I get from being a part of the Homeless Garden Project has changed my life in more ways than I could ever explain. This is something I had never done before so much. I do believe the quote, "Your vibe attracts your drive." In such a short time, I have learned every flower on the farm, and I've picked all my favorites. I have learned to plant plants. I have learned to plant and harvest crops, make trellises, identify pests, and so many more farm tasks. But most importantly, I have seen a project go from seed to part of a salad in our lunch. I have learned to persevere in times of challenge, giving up. I met some of the strongest people I've ever met in my life, who inspire me to be the best version of myself that I can be every day. I've dedicated myself to a community that I can now call my Farm-ally, as Elise would say. Since starting as a trainee at the Homeless Garden Project, I have obtained two other jobs that I love. My employers can depend on me to show up on time, to perform to the best of my abilities. I used to wake up every day dreading what the day was like. I struggled with depression and anxiety and so much fear. I didn't believe I was worthy of being happy, joyous, and free. Now, every morning I wake up and I'm excited to go to the farm and be part of something bigger than myself. I'm learning time management, dependability, teamwork, and leadership skills at the Homeless Garden Project. I can apply to any job I get after I graduate. I was always running to escape my problems. Now I have finally found a place to plant my roots and see the finished product a year from now. Much like a beautiful Dahlia that starts with a seed, evolves as it grows, faces challenges, and becomes a beautiful flower by the end. The Homeless Garden Project has changed my life in more ways than I could have ever dreamed of. I am so excited to see what this year brings for me and the impact that I can make at the Homeless Garden Project. Thank you.
So, thank you. I would just ask if we could pull up that last slide again, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And as I said, Claude Rosen is here with me.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, I will bring this back to the City Council to see if there are questions for Tony Elliott or Kathy at this point in time. Any council questions at all? Okay.
One, back with the motion, I'm sorry, was what I.
Yeah, go ahead, and yeah, let's, yeah, put that up. Tony, my understanding, what's being requested here is that you'll have to, you will, I would assume, have to come back with a work plan, sort of description and costs. You anticipate having, you'll be able to get that ready based on working with the, with the, with HGP?
Yes, yeah, based on this motion language here.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Okay, well, without any questions from council, Renee, go ahead, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bolder?
All right, I have one quick question. A couple of members of the public just reached out to me and, and one, were wondering, so what the process would be for public input in regards to this, in the timeline, in regards to this amendment?
Because if that's for me, I'll just say that's what we're asking for the Parks Director and the Planning Director and the staff to come back and tell you so that we all know the answers to those questions.
Yeah. Tony, do you have a comment on that?
Yep. Yeah, just looking at this motion before us, I think the first step, and this is really consistent with what staff recommended, would be the Parks and Recreation Commission on September 13th. And then following that meeting, yeah, looking at this motion here, I think, reporting back to council on September 28th. So I think at that time, we would have more detail in terms of, you know, what does this process really look like, in terms of CEQA, public engagement, and a lot of these other factors that Kathy acknowledged, so at least, and further testing and so forth. I think we would work to come back by that September 28th date, create process. But in the immediate term, it would be that September 13th Parks Commission meeting.
Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Conterrey Johnson?
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation and the, at least the audio part of the video. I, there was a comment and a suggestion by one community member who hadn't heard about, and was also concerned about community input and engagement. And the suggestion was that there, so there are posters up at Pogonip right now for the original project, so to post something along with those posters of these proposed changes and what the community process would be. So just, just an additional touch point for folks.
Great. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring this out to the public now, seeing no other hands up by council members. So this is for item number 31, considering, excuse me, item 30, relocating the Homeless Garden Project to the side of the, to the Upper Meadow, a main meadow in Pogonip. And if you do want to speak on this item, you want to raise your hand by pressing star nine. I see a caller with phone number ending in 1332, and if you press star six to unmute yourself, you'll have two minutes.
Yes, hello, my name is Kelly Deanwood. I'm the, sorry, my bar still says I start. My name is Kelly Deanwood. I'm the CEO of CCOF, and I just wanted to express my strong support for evaluating the relocation to the Upper Meadow. We're a nonprofit founded in Santa Cruz in 1973. We maintain our headquarters on the west side of town. We work with over 4,000 diverse organic producers through North America and employ over 120 full-time staff. We are accredited by the U.S. Department of Agriculture to certify operations to federal organic standards, and we're super proud to certify the Homeless Garden Project. They really are stewards of the land, and this relocation would give them annual opportunity to deepen their impact. Organic practices are scientifically proven to increase soil organic matter, sequester carbon, um, organic farmers intentionally cultivate biodiversity of pollinators and beneficial insects, and protect fragile natural resources such as rivers, creeks, and nearby water bodies. In addition to supporting the Homeless Garden Project's stewardship of the land, we're Santa Cruz residents, and we know firsthand how needed these services are for folks experiencing homelessness in our community. We are continually inspired by how Homeless Garden Project transforms lives through cultivating the land and seeding change. Um, you know, I just really hope that this committee can remain firm in holding extractive practices but embrace generative practices of this project. Um, I really hope that we can help our community members experiencing homelessness and expand opportunities for our community to experience a healthy, nutritious, organic farm. So we're, we're really excited about this opportunity for Homeless Garden Project to expand and deepen their impact, both to the land and community members. Um, so really hope that you can support evaluating the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have- Phone number ending in 8712, please. Press star six to unmute yourself.
My name is Julia Huff, and I'm here with my husband.
Mi nombre es Guillermo Cantus.
And apologies, we're in a bilingual family here and having difficulty accessing the Spanish interpreter. But we are, we are friends of Pogonip, um, and, um, we'd like to propose, uh, the restoration of the Pogonip Clubhouse and Polo Field to create indoor/outdoor spaces for the community to meet, socialize, you know, to create a, a mixed-use educational center. And, uh, you know, looking to the UCSC Hay Barn as an inspirational restoration project, that it's possible. Uh, renovation of one Polo Field can create community space for many outdoor activities, including two to four international charitable polo events that can give the community, give back to the fundraisers for the Pogonip operational expenses and programming, share polo with the community and create an international tourist destination. It'd be great to have a small polo museum created to honor the historic U.S. Women's Polo Association and today's female athletes who struggle with women's equity on this issue in sport today. Without knowing it at the time, um, you know, these women of the 30s invest, their investment in Pogonip and Pasatenco Polo Grounds created the open spaces that the community enjoys today. This is an opportunity to preserve equestrian open space and heritage, and in accordance with the Pogonip Master Plan usage that was laid out, which is as follows. Rehabilitate the historic clubhouse to serve as a staging area for educational programs, a meeting and retreats, and special events. So, um, we submitted, uh, a letter for the council's consideration to request that the amendments to the Pogonip Master Plan not be reviewed at this time in order to allow us more time to develop with the community and finalize our proposal for submission and review by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have a phone number ending in 1810.
Yeah, hi Garrett. As with many feel-good stories, the council listens to when deciding to support various nonprofits. It's all about the story and not a financial accounting of the cost per benefit. It's up to the donors to demand accountability at the Garden Project, but you are one also considering this is a permanent home on public property. You are such a donor. I wonder what the total cost the city has expended in consultants, planning, staff time, the true rental cost of the land being allocated in near perpetuity, the lost public access, divided by the number per year of homeless individuals actually raised through self-sufficiency, and the total, and not just elevated to government support like Section 8 is. I do like the percentage success succeeded by HPGP, but what is the math? Similar to the budget, once the city approves expenditures, somehow accountability disappears and is routinely re-approved and shoved into the next year's budget without, uh, much considering of performance. So that is a con- What promises are being made? My understanding is HGP sells product in competition with, uh, for-profit farms. Is that true? If so, it sounds pretty socialist concerning the government's involvement. Do you have any answers to those questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and bring this back. I'm not seeing any other attendees. Uh, oh, I just see one more. Um, I've got Colin used dash two, press star six to unmute yourself, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, this is Douglas Deitch. I am Executive Director, Pogonip Foundation. Uh, I very much support, oh, uh, first day of the Homeless Garden on Pelton Street, I was a party that supplied the, uh, care service there with Paul Lee and the number of people who were there. Uh, I very much support moving the homeless garden to their new location. Uh, what I wanted to do though was, in the, in this connection, bring to your attention the Pogonip Creek. And it's my understanding, the Pogonip Creek water has been sold somehow to some other party. Uh, I'd be happy to talk with you about this. I don't think that's a legitimate sale. I think that came with the property and no one else had any rights to that. It's a very significant amount of, of water that I would like to see utilized for the homeless garden. Anyway, that's my support, and please approve this and move the homeless garden further forward on Pogonip. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will bring this back. Uh, there's no other public that's indicating they would like to speak, so I'll go ahead and bring this back to the council for further discussion. Any other questions for the staff? Um, Vice Mayor Brunner, I saw your hand pop up. It was pretty much a tie with Councilmember Cummings, so, [laughing] Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Brunner. You're muted.
Thank you, Mayor Myers. Thank Kathy Kelso. Thank you, Tony Elliott. Um, this was a very interesting item to reach through, and there were some, many questions in there that, um, were addressed, including in the sample, uh, amendments that were provided in the, in the packet, some of the changes, um, and looking through some of the graphics that were cited. Um, I'm wondering, Bonnie, if you can bring back that, bring up the motion that, uh, for direction to staff. Great. Um, I'm happy to move this direction to staff, uh, to initiate a, a process for relocation of the Homeless Garden Project from the Meadow to the Upper Meadow, um, including the associated public outreach, analysis, and studies, and environmental review. Um, and to direct staff to, to send this to place discussion of the proposed amendment on the September 13th Parks and Rec Commission agenda, to get early feedback and confirm process and time for the amendment, and to initiate the amendment process as expeditedly as possible and report to the council at its September 28th meeting on how this proposal would be incorporated into department work plans. Um, and to report back on the status to the council within three months.
I have a motion, uh, shown up on the screen right now from Vice Mayor Brunner. Uh, I have Councilmember, I'm sorry, Bonnie, did you have a quick, uh, comment?
I, I do, and I don't know if, um, Director Elliott meant, um, addressed it or not, but if it goes to the Parks and Rec Commission on the 13th, um, the report for 8th would be due three days later. So I don't know if that is a concern or doable.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yeah, and Bonnie, I'm happy to respond to that. I, that's a really good question. I think, um, yeah, what we'd hope to do is take this to the commission on the 13th, and then, um, again, their formal, uh, feedback and vote on this. I think it just depends on what that feedback is, how quickly we can turn that around. Expecting to come back on September 28th to the city council with a, a lot of detail in terms of process, that's something I think that we can start to think about internally and start to, to sort of conceptualize what that process might be. We can work with the planning, uh, department on what that might look like. But yeah, I think we can keep that date for now, but will just depend on what the nature of the commission meeting is on the 13th and what feedback they provide, and what additional information we might want to put together for the council meeting on the 28th. But I think it's fair to, to keep for now, um, and we can, we can go from here.
Okay, uh, I have Councilmember Cummings, um, and then Council, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Watkins, and then, um, Kathy Kelso has her hand up as well.
Um, yeah, I'd be happy to second the motion, and, um, I just wanted to express, you know, appreciation for the relationship that the Homeless Garden Project has had, the city of Santa Cruz, and the amazing benefits that they provide to our community. And, you know, just understanding that since 1998, you know, we've had this, um, you know, dedication with the Homeless Garden Project to move them into the Pogonip, um, that, you know, we got so close with the Lower Meadow, and then, you know, we happened to find out that, uh, you know, there was the lead contamination in that area. Yeah, I think we really need to, and it's in our best interest to try to work as best we can with the Homeless Garden Project since we've been committed to them for so long, um, to kind, to find them a space. And it sounds like, you know, we found an area, part of which that was previously developed. Um, and so there's a lot of potential for us to be able to have less impacts on the environment by moving to, uh, this proposed area. Um, and to, to the member of the public who called regarding the, um, clubhouse, just the clubhouse, you know, that's been sitting vacant for a pretty long time, and there's plenty of potential for being able to renovate that moving forward. This wouldn't stop that building from being renovated, and, you know, if there's interest in turning that into an educational center, I think it would be great if we could start finding people in the community who might be willing to help donate, innovate that building. But as it stands right now, um, the city doesn't have money for those kinds of renovations. So if we were to not move in this direction, that building would still sit vacant for who knows how long. And, um, you know, given that we've made this commitment and we, in our, um, 1998 master plan, where we've said that, you know, this is a key component and it's an essential program, I think it makes the most sense to move forward, um, at this point in time. So I'm happy to second the motion and, and support this direction.
Okay, we have a motion, um, and a second, and, um, I see, uh, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Boulder. Um, Kathy, did you have a question or a comment? Uh, if you have, we're in the middle of deliberation now, so we're starting to get into a little bit outside, but happy to, if you have additional information you wanted to add, please get in. By the way, Kathy, you gotta turn, turn your speaker on. There you go.
I briefly wanted to just comment on the question about the timing. Um, to have a fully transparent process, I think we need the timeline, which is part of the motion, and then hopefully the Parks Commission meeting will be mostly about what that process is going to look at, because it'll have to come back to them, as I understand it, once there's an actual proposed amendment, which they've discussed, and then they have all the facts behind. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, I've got, uh, Councilmember Boulder.
So I just wanted to add some additional community benefits that the Homeless Garden Project provides that weren't brought up initially, and, and, um, and maybe it was a little bit, it was like, I want to acknowledge the, the, with the cost structure of their CSA where they provide, um, you know, the full CSA, they have the U-PIC option, and then they also do donate a large portion of those boxes to, um, low-income residents in our community, and then they also provide, um, we've had, uh, field trip opportunities and things like that, so they provide education, collaboration with, um, Santa Cruz City Schools in the past. There are also added benefits. And so in, in, in a way that we can support, um, them with, moving forward with this public process, I think that I'm in total support at this time as well, so just to say that.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Um, as, as much as I would like to just hold forth about all the wonderful things that the Homeless Garden Project does, um, and, you know, what it means to our community, um, you know, I'll just say, you know, there, there are so many reasons to support, um, the Homeless Garden Project and, and try to find a way to, to make this work. I'm, um, really pleased to see that, um, we may have an alternative here, and I think it is in, uh, the city's interest, his interest to pursue that. Um, so I'll, I'll happily support this motion, um, and, you know, and just say there, you know, one thing I will say is that we've had, um, some, some folks write in, and I've had some, some people call with, uh, specific concerns and have asked that we, uh, or other council members, um, include those specifics on recommendations for consideration in this, um, motion today. And I just want to say that the reason I'm not, um, uh, going that route or asking for, uh, for additional, um, considerations or, or details in the, in the motion is that I really see this as the beginning of that process, and I think that, um, that folks will have an opportunity to share their, their thoughts, their concerns. Um, I am quite convinced that the Homeless Garden Project will, uh, see this through to the end at the, you know, the level of review that is, um, needed, that's very important for us to, uh, make these kinds of decisions. And I just have so much respect and, you know, enthusiasm for the work that, um, you all do, that, you know, I see this as a really, really wonderful opportunity for some community engagement and also, um, you know, uh, some additional, uh, education within our community and activating that space in a way that I think is just going to benefit everybody, um, you know, and, and, and so I just, I just wanted to say, um, you know, thank you, and, and the, the folks who are concerned, you're going to have an opportunity to talk about what that looks like and, you know, what ways we might be able to, um, you know, mitigate what, you know, the, the potential, um, challenges of, of using this space. So I'm thrilled to support it, and I'll, I'll just leave it there. Um, and, um, thank you, Kathy, thank you, Tony, thank you, Noah, um, and everybody who's been involved in this long, long process, um, since, uh, for decades now. I just remember that site on Pelton, um, at, working there, you know, as a, as a student, it like enriched my life. I know it has enriched so many people's lives, and it will continue to do that, um, in its permanent home.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, uh, I don't have any other raised hands, I'll just, um, chime in too. I think this is a really good, um, I've, I've seen lots of, uh, places that, um, open space and organic farms work wonderfully together, and so I really have a lot of trust that, um, Homeless Garden Project will not only, um, you know, improve and be able to expand their program, but actually I think that they will become an amazing steward on that property, and that property has long needed a steward, um, and people who are there visiting. And Kathy, I was really struck by the amount of volunteers you have who come to the garden, and that's just more people coming to our open space and using our parks. So I think this is, um, really an amazing opportunity. So, um, we look forward to working, working through this with you guys. And with that, I will, um, Bonnie, go ahead. We have a motion on the table by Vice Mayor Brunner, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Cummings. And, uh, Bonnie, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Boulder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously, and, uh, Kathy, thank you for the thorough, um, uh, really, really thorough presentation today. It really helped us understand kind of how far you've come and why this is such an important, um, thing to, to really look at carefully. So, thanks so much.
Thank you so much, from the bottom, bottom of all of our hearts. We really appreciate it.
You bet. Okay, thanks so much.
Aye.
Okay. Woo-hoo. Okay, next item up is, um, item number 31, and this is consider appointing an interim city manager. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from the council. We'll then take public comment and then return to the council for deliberation and action. Uh, and I will turn this over to Lisa Murphy, our Human Resources Director.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you. Well, it's bittersweet to be leading this discussion and presenting this item. As you know, our city manager is retiring at the end of the month, after eleven years as our city manager and thirteen years as our assistant city manager. And you know that we have contracted with a recruitment firm to conduct a nationwide search for our new city manager. While our recruitment is not yet completed, and we will experience a gap in time, city council has directed me to prepare this report to appoint interim city manager, and that interim is our director of water, Rosemary Menard. And I'll just briefly provide Ms. Menard's background. As you know, she brings more than forty years of experience in the public sector to this role. Before joining us in 2014, she worked as executive executive level water utility roles throughout the Midwest. And she brings a wealth of strategic management leadership experience to this position. And we are all very pleased with the council's direction to appoint Ms. Menard. I am legally required to also state the salary at which she will be starting. If you do approve this interim appointment, it will be effective September first. The salary will be commensurate with the first step of the existing, the city manager's salary range, which is $120.32 an hour. All of her other benefits will remain the same as it exists now. Upon completion of this assignment, whether it's voluntary or from either side, she will return to her position as the water director. So we are very pleased again to be making this recommendation. I am very proud to be the, I am proud to present our staff in presenting you this interim assignment for Rosemary, as we look forward to her leadership to get us through this interim time. So with that, that concludes my presentation on the interim assignment of Ms. Menard for the city manager position.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there questions or comments from the council at this time? Okay, I'll go ahead and, oh, I do have one. Councilmember Watkins?
I don't have a question, but I just had a comment, and I just wanted to echo my appreciation and excitement to have Rosemary step up to fill this role. And she's done an exceptional job in water and was really lucky to have her on the interim assignment. So since you opened it up for comments, I
Thank you. Any other questions? Or, okay, great. I'm going to go ahead and take this out to the public. This will be for item number thirty-one on our regular, on our general business agenda. If you are interested in commenting on consider appointing an interim city manager, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. And I am not seeing any hands go up. So I will take this back to the council, and I would look for a motion. I'll also comment that I also am just pleased that Rosemary has agreed to this appointment, and she will just do an amazing job. And I think we will, so we're very thankful that she's able to do this and willing to do this during this interim period during our search. I see council member Watkins, and then council member Kalentari Johnson in that order.
I'm happy to make the motion to approve the appointment of Rosemary Menard as our interim city manager. And I think also, I just want to note that I believe that she's the first female city manager even on an interim assignment for the City of Santa Cruz, which is very noteworthy and exciting in itself. So happy to move that and to note that as well.
Councilmember Kalentari Johnson?
Yeah, I'd like to second that. And also just want to echo my colleagues' comments. Thank you so much for stepping in and supporting our city in this way right now.
Welcome. Great. Rosemary, I don't know if you have anything to say, but we just certainly we're gonna How about be careful what you wish for? We promised to have shorter meetings. How's that? I'm sure that will work for everyone. Well, thank you, Rosemary, for stepping up. And I'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmembers Watkins?
Aye.
Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bruner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Well, thank you, Rosemary. We we look forward to working with you. And I with you. Thank you. Next in our agenda this evening is our oral communications. And this is the time for members of the public who are streaming this meeting. If you want to comment during oral communication, now is the time to call in. The R on your screen. Oral communications is an opportunity for members of the community to speak to us on items that are not listed on today's agenda. If you're interested, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. You will have two minutes to speak. When it is your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. We request that you clearly and slowly state your name before making your comment so that we can accurately capture, can actually capture, accurately capture your name in the meeting minutes. However, it is not required to state your name for the record. Please remember, this is a time for council to hear from the public. We are not able to engage in dialogue with each member of the public, but when we are able, we will address the questions raised after oral communications has been completed. I see two hands in the audience, in the attendees tonight. First will be phone number Indian zero five eight one. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for taking my call. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. So I wanted to ask a question regarding the maniacs write-out on the disruption and everything. The ordinance for for a public event, for the maniacs event, it looks like to me, if I'm reading it correctly, would have cost them maybe in the neighborhood of like four or $5,000 for the permit. And the penalty for not getting the permit is $110. Where's the motivation for these people to not do this again next year? And I'm not going to state my name because I've been threatened by them folks before.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Lyra Filippini. Again, this is for items not on our agenda this evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, lovely. Yes, this is Lyra Filippini. Today, I just wanted to thank the city, especially city council and the Historic Preservation Commission, for approving and supporting the Amamutsun Tribal Band removal of El Camino Real bells. This Saturday's ceremony of removing the last bell in Santa Cruz is such an important moment for the indigenous community, and step in the important direction toward recognition of the tragic history of both enslavement and genocide of the indigenous population in California, which I'm sure you guys are aware at this point was especially extreme in Santa Cruz, in the Mission and surrounding areas. As we move toward a more equitable society, it's imperative that this reality be reflective awareness. This happened on the soil we now inhabit. I know it began with Spanish colonialism. It continued, and in some ways was actually escalated for the period after Alta California became part of the United States. I'm very proud of our city for being the first city to support this effort by the local Amamutsun Tribal Band. And I want to give a special thanks to Mayor Donna Myers and Councilmember Justin Cummings for agreeing to speak at Saturday's event. Val Lopez, the chairperson of this tribal band, expressed great gratitude for that gesture. And he said he hopes to see many city council and staff there on Saturday. I hope to see you too. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, I have call-in user three.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. This is Doug Deech calling again. Well, first thing, what I wanted to do, I didn't get a chance to call in, but I wanted to congratulate and wish the best to the city city manager Bernal and Chris Schneider on their retirement. Next, what I wanted to
Last year, you're, we need, you need
Excuse me, excuse me.
You're
So I got through Bernal and Schneider. Next, I wanted to explain for a moment about Pogonip Foundation, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) I founded in nineteen ninety-five for the purpose of basically restoring the Pogonip Clubhouse Building, which backed to this this year marks the twenty-fifth year, ten years before the lease that I'd been negotiating with the city was due to expire. And I would be handing the city, this year, the keys to a completely renovated National Register Pogonip Clubhouse Building. I wanted to make the bring that up. Pogonip.org is a website that explains this. The last thing is, I'm concerned, well, City of San, the City of San Diego just had a direct potable reuse project approved that they've been working on since 2014. Excuse me. I mentioned last time, dougdeech.info. That is my direct potable reuse problem, the 21,000 acre Monterey Bay Estuary National Monument. Please check it out. That's all it's going to work here with 3.5 feet of sea level rise projected by the commission in the next thirty years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have phone number Indian one eight one zero, although it looks like he just disappeared. Okay, I've got a hand raised with Krista Corwin. Press star six, please.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So hello, council members. Good evening. I wanted to, I've been trying to find the answer to this question, so I thought I might as well just come and ask. Our council members, Mayor Myers, council member Kalentari Johnson, and Kalentari, I'm sorry, and council member Golda, are they currently under investigation by the FPTC? I just wanted to ask and give you a chance to answer that. The other thing I wanted to mention is I appreciate that the grand jury gave the city council, you know, that there was an obligation of the city council to respond to concerns of fire, potential wildfire damage, and that was a large part of the impetus to crack down on encampments. However, as I've expressed many times, and so have a lot of other people, you know, that the Tolo or the CSSO, you know, did that in a really discriminatory way, and and probably not the way that we, you know, should have done so, given, you know, of our own Santa Cruz County citizens who are experiencing homelessness and just trying to survive out there. So with that, I do want to ask that city council agendize nullifying the CSSO. And of course, the only folks who would be able to participate in that discussion are folks who do not have a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have phone number Indian one eight one zero.
Bonnie, this is anti-mandate, not anti-vax. The pressure of the profit and fear control agenda has hastily applied a safe and effective label to a vaccine with only six months of data, no view, which so far has killed over 6,000 citizens, including my dead personal friend Jim, caused 37,000 serious injuries and 450,000 adverse effect reports that mount weekly. That information is highly censored out of the media. The truth is now expendable. But simple math says that mRNA vaccines are 20 times more lethal than a normal flu shot. Troubling our report, totally vaccinated Israel, where the increase in incidence of heart attacks in young people fingers a vaccination cause. The theory is that vaccine-generated spike proteins lodge in organs they shouldn't be, and the body attacks those organs and can make for micro blood clotting, all of which needs more forensic pathology investigation. But we get crickets. I would remind that damaged cells in the heart and brain reproduce much, they scar. COVID is not smallpox. Subjecting near-zero-risk children or childbearing-age people to mRNA vax or requiring vaccine health passports to work, eat, move about, and worse, wishing ill and dehumanizing those who believe differently in medical procedure-informed consent, to force these healthy and even no-risk young or recovered people to take these risks against their will by another's choosing is purely immoral. The effectiveness of vaccines is short-lived, requiring unknown more. The vaccinated can still be infected, shed, transmit, making zero COVID immunity via these vaccines uncertain. This is what the beginning of what an evil authoritarianism looks like. Don't ask where the trains are going. The worst is the dehumanizing, isolation, identity, and educational deprivation of young children, all of them subject to unnecessary risk for no benefit. This is child predation. The cold trail, Dante said the deepest depth of hell is reserved for betrayal. Solomon Resti wrote, children are the vessels into which adults pour their poison. Why were the early treatments to help sick people deprioritized? Why does even the mere mention of ibromectin in India get immediate ban? Answer greed and power.
Next up, I have phone four five five eight, please.
Hi. So I've got a concern about trash. Just going to read this to you. There's trash everywhere. Highway one, highway seventeen, two eighty, one oh one, eighty-four, on the trail to Three Mile, on the sand dunes at Scott's Creek, on the pullout to Waddell, on the pullout just out of Bayhound Rock, on every single pullout. There's trash on Olive Springs Road, on Old San Jose Road, on SoCal, on Chanticleer. There's trash everywhere and no one picks it up. Well, that's a lie. I pick it up when I surf, when I'm driving the ones and can't stand it anymore. So I pull over and pick up trash cans full of trash when I'm walking down any street in towns, and there's trash literally every 10 feet. And occasionally, I see others doing the same. Nature is an extension of us. It creates us, sustains us. The food we eat comes from nature. And how do we give thanks? By trashing it? This is a real disconnection here, in that collectively, we no longer feel love and appreciation for nature so much so. To trash it and not pick it up, this is a collective failure, and it needs to be addressed. So here's some solutions. Once a month, block Highway one from Swift Street to Andes Nuevo or anywhere. Post signs on East Cliff and West Cliff. Invite people to help clean. Local government help, anyone help. Take kids out of school. Block the highway for two hours, teach them the importance of cleaning up. I guarantee people will show up. This will rebuild a connection with nature and a feeling of respect, pride, appreciation, and beauty. There's a huge misconception that picking up trash is us, that it's somehow for the low-hanging fruit. Nothing could be further from the truth. Keeping our world clean is not a punishment, is a responsibility and a privilege. It demonstrates appreciation for life, not wanting to dump trash on it, just like you wouldn't dump trash in your living room. And we're all responsible. Yeah, the people en masse have lost connection, local officials have lost connection, Caltrans has lost connection. Nobody cares. The trash I'm picking up is decades old. We need to slow down and re- really matters in life and regain sanity. It's important for everyone. Without it, we are literally living in a dump, and it's just getting worse. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay, I've got one more for oral communications. Heather, please press star six.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. I am a solo, single parent that has a child in a local elementary school. My child has been out of school since Monday with, she had a sore throat in the very beginning of the day, but doesn't have it anymore. We're still out kind of waiting for this PCR test to come back, kid to go back to school, even though she's felt better for a while. Is there any way that we can help facilitate testing for students that need to get back to school? I know that we got tested at the Civic, and the backlog for the results is taking, they said, between 48 and 72 hours. It's just kind of creating this really, I can, difficulty for me because I can't get back to work. And I, I don't know what to do. That's really all I have to say. I just wanted to let you know that there's probably a lot of other parents out there that are going through similar things. And just trying to see if we can create any solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other attendees tonight that would like to speak to us during oral communication? Not seeing any additional hands. So we will, I'm sorry, council member Golda, did you want to respond to one of those statements?
I did. I was going to respond to
I was going to respond to two, actually. One, I just wanted to say thanks to everybody that organized our beach cleanups, because it really did bring an awareness to the community. And one of my little junior beach cleaner-uppers, Kai Cora Nowenberg, went out with all of her friends on Sunday and went down and did a second beach cleanup. They even brought buckets and ordered their own pickers off the internet, and so it really just, you know, inspired them to take it to the next level. And the other thing I wanted to mention to the last caller was, we do have tests at Santa Cruz City Schools at all the sites, and I myself have been testing kids every morning, starting at 7:30 in the morning. And so I'd say, contact your school. I know when my son was symptomatic, they requested for me to go to the Civic, and so that did take two days to get the results back, and then he was able to go back to school. But if there's exposures and things like that, we do have systems in place, and the testing is free, and it's the quick 15-minute test, and it's been really successful. So reach out to your child's office.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Watkins?
I was just going to add on to that, because I do, I know that the testing is challenging for families, and it's limited and it's delayed. So I don't know, at a future, maybe city manager update, we could hear about really what's going on and what the coordinated effort is in regards to testing. And this is not the first parent that I've heard from that is really impacted by a potential without knowing and then waiting, you know, for like a week before they can actually figure it out whether or not they can send their school, their child back. And I think some of it's just the delay. So I think even just how do we get the information out to the community if there is a potential opportunity for us to do that at one of our meetings?
Yeah, maybe we can look at our website as well to make sure that's all up to date. So, okay, great. We definitely will kind of put that, maybe as a city managers update next meeting, we'll have those details available so folks can hear those. I won't be here, but we can do that. Okay. Well, with that officially adjourned this evening, and Martine, congratulations on your final city council meeting. You get to just go home and have Tuesdays to your family from here on out.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, goodnight.
Goodnight, everybody.